All set, Kim? Good?
No.
Andy was, Andy.
Folks, please stand and join me in the pledge of reasons. My pledge of reasons is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome one and all to the March twenty fifth meeting of the town of Canada Dingle Planning Board. Uh, we have some new faces, but we also have familiar faces. Good to see you back. Let me introduce the folks here at the diocese. We've got Kim Burkhart, who's our facility coordinator. I'd like to introduce and congratulate Dan Bukowski, who's our new alternate to the planning board. Tim Schneider, board member, Mark Tolbert, board member, Men of Man Lincoln, board member, Bob Leek Porce, vice chairman, board member. I'm Chuck Euler, I'm the chairman. Uh, Kristen Smith is zoning officer, Eric Cooper with MRB, and Chris Nadler, our town attorney and planning board attorney. Okay, we're gonna follow the agenda. It's a pretty full agenda tonight, so we're gonna try to keep it moving. When we come to an item, uh, item on the agenda that you would like to address, uh, please come to the podium and give us your name and address and, uh, address the board directly. And for the purpose of the applicants, uh, we would ask that you come up and make a, again, give us your name and address. Uh, give us, uh, an overview of your application. Uh, we as a board will then ask questions and deliberate. On each application, I will go out to the audience, the public, if anybody has any comments uh, or questions on the application, I will then, uh, ask for those. And then we'll reconvene as a board and deliberate and hopefully come to a decision this evening regarding each application. See, if we're down to privilege of the floor, is anyone here or in digital land, uh, here to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda? Wait once or twice. Okay, move on. Uh, as far as the testament of legal notices, uh, we have one public hearing, new public hearing this evening uh, for a subdivision on Rossiter Road, and that has been duly advertised in the Daily Messenger on March eighteenth. And so that has been recorded. Okay, we'll move right ahead to the first item on the agenda, which is a continued public hearing, CPN two thousand twenty four one seventeen uh, for Nixon Peabody, represented by Jared this evening, uh, for a continuous site plan, special use permit, for a construction operation of personal wireless communication facility on seventy seven acre parcel in the AR tier zoning district, specifically twenty sixty one, County Route Eight. Uh, welcome, Mr. Lusk.
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name again, for the record, is Jared Lusk with the Lockwood Nixon Peabody. With me is Jeff Skolik and, uh, from NVNC and Dave Weisenreiter from Kastich Engineering, the project engineer for the, for the site. Uh, during the last meeting, which I attended remotely from a much sunnier place, uh, I, uh, I, I did observe the board request, uh, the Verizon to take a, a, a look at an alternate location, second alternate location for, I'll call it location three, uh, of the project, which was, uh, delineated and described uh, by the, uh, by the board. And, uh, since that meeting, we've worked with, uh, Dave Weisenreiter, Kastich, and the Verizon team in an effort to identify and explore the feasibility of that, that location. It is up in front of you. Uh, does, does that accurately depict the location that was described at the meeting? I'm seeing, uh, it was hard for me to see from the, from the Zoom when I was here. I understand that to be so.
I think you got the gist.
All right, good. All right, so I'll have, uh, Dave, uh, Weisenreiter come in and describe, uh, the project and, and the various distances. I know I, on March nineteenth, I submitted a, a, a letter, our first letter. Uh, we wanted to get the information to the board as properly as we could as it was prepared. So with, there were two submissions on the nineteenth and again on the twenty fourth in an effort to try to get you the information to digest. But you can see on importantly, exhibit GG, uh, which is, uh, I think I'll allow Dave to describe it. But there was an important table, uh, that described, uh, the distances from those adjacent properties. And, uh, if you recall, and I'm not going to recreate history, but we came in with the first location. Uh, the first location, if you recall from my, my very first presentation, was chosen in large part in discussion with the, with the farmer owner of the property because that, uh, uh, that portion of his property was the least productive agricultural soil. So if it was gonna go into his field, he wanted it to go in an area that was least productive. This board requested that we relocate, uh, consider what I will say, location two, alternate location one, uh, a, a location that was farther from the, the adjacent homes. If you look at, uh, exhibit, uh, GG, uh, we provided to you a distance, uh, again, uh, the, they were, uh, in, in location one, in an effort to summarize it, there were twelve houses that were, uh, less than twelve hundred feet from the tower, uh, as originally proposed. At location two, uh, based on the relocation in an area that we thought was, for lack of a better word to describe it, centrally located, but up closer to the farmer's house, which was the request, it was centrally located to the properties, uh, to the north and south of the farm. So there were, as a result, there were, uh, there were only three houses that were less than twelve hundred feet from that tower. One of them, of course, being the landlord's. Uh, again, as we, uh, a- a- and of the, the two that were, uh, that, excuse me, the three that were less than twelve hundred, they were each over a thousand. So they went, uh, the, the lowest was a thousand fifty, second lowest was a thousand sixty five, and the third under twelve hundred was eleven hundred and eighty-five feet. So they were all at least a thousand feet from the tower. As we've reviewed this location, location three, as, as been described and shown, we've now reduced that, that, uh, that, uh, increased that number of houses that are at least twelve hundred feet from the, uh, from the tower, from three to nine. And again, so as we looked at it, we're now moving, uh, moving that tower closer to the homes uh, that are, uh, to the lower, I guess, left of the, of the tower. We pr- we'll provide some detail to that. But again, we went from, uh, again, three that were less than twelve hundred, all over a thousand. So now there's, uh, nine of them, again, most of them over, remaining over a thousand, but one, uh, eight hundred and ten and one nine hundred and sixty-five. And, and, and again, that's just in summary, what our concern is. Verizon is indifferent as to where this board wants this tower on the property. Uh, what we, what we did want to show you is that by relocating it to this location, we're moving it closer when, when we thought that the, that the desire we're moving to location two was to maximize the distance from adjacent houses. And, and so we'll stop there. I'll give you, uh, Dave's gonna come up, we'll give you a little qualitative review of the differences or lack thereof in the overall visibility by moving from two to three. Again, Verizon is indifferent. Wherever the board wants to place the tower, whether it be location two or three, we assume one is, is out. Uh, but we just wanted to show you and, and from our perspective, it did, it, it, uh, wasn't getting the board what I think it had hoped as a result of the, uh, the relocation, the location.
Good evening, Dave Weiser with Kastich Engineering. Uh, the first exhibit which was up was the concept plan. We're on to exhibit number two right now, which you'll get the idea. Um, the access for location number three that we're currently looking at is actually gonna be the same access route as we had for location two with the request of the board. We also did add the emergency pull off area around Station six hundred. Um, the current location where we are at location three that we're investigating, it's about a hundred and sixty feet from the southern property line closest to the woods and about two hundred feet east of the property line that it goes through the greenhouses. As Jared explained through the, uh, exhibit in the table right here, um, there are significantly more homes that are impacted to the southwest, location three, than we had at location two. Be possible to pull up the, uh, photo log, um, what?
Is that, uh?
Number three, yeah, please.
Okay.
Savannah White over there.
I think she is an easier job.
Um, so what she's gonna do is pull up an exhibit that shows where the photos were taken from for both location two and location three. And one of the things we looked at, uh, was that separation distance to the homes that were closest. And on that, there is the, uh, actual twelve hundred foot radii from the two tower locations. It's in there somewhere, right?
There it is.
There it is. Um, so you can see there's the red and the blue. The red radii is location number two and the blue is radii for location number three. Um, so we are starting to impact the homes further to the south. One other thing I would like to point out is that, uh, location two, I can see on there is seven forty-three is the ground elevation. Uh, we do have seven fifty-nine is the ground elevation for location number three. The ground elevation at location number three is approximately fifteen feet higher. And we are about three hundred and forty feet further south, uh, with location number three. So it is a little bit higher. Uh, there was discussion with the RF engineer at Verizon Wireless in regards to the possibility of lowering the tower location number three. Um, and it was determined that it's not feasible. We look at the ground location of elevation number one to elevation number two, uh, ten feet was lost at that point. And even though, and he was willing to forego that loss of signal to there, but moving further south with the objectives to the north, it's really not a possibility to lower it further, uh, at location number three. We did, if we take a look, there's boxes on there, around eight of those numbers up there. What we did is went back out and flew a drone on March eighteenth with a target ten feet below the drone, were able to take pictures from eight of the same locations that were taken for location number two. So basically we could compare between location number two and location number three. If you can, both the, uh, views from tower location number two.
That's the dirt dungeons.
That would be actually, we're on number three right now, so number four. There you go. So one of the things that I did, rather than going individual homes, took pictures from standing at the tower location on the ground. So basically, head height. So this is standing out tower location number three, looking back out. And as you can see, you can see a fair number of homes that do front on County Road Eight. If you go to the second picture, pan down a little bit, there you go. You can kind of see the backs of those homes, um, pretty well. So that means like we'd be able to see the compound in the fencing area. If you continue on down, I'm kind of panning from north to west to south. Again, there's the back of the landowner's home and then kind of looking to the southwest would be the last picture. Okay, now if I think if we continue, we'll get into pictures from location number two.
That's, that's it.
Okay. Patient two, yeah, go to the bottom of this one and they'll be in there. That's right, bottom of this one. Whoop, no, slow down. Nope, a little bit further, should be, and keep going down. Uh, we'll skip the locations from number two from right now, but what I'll tell you is you could see more of the back of the homes from location number three than you could from location two. You guys can probably find them in that file somewhere. Um, so the last would be like the photo Sims, if you could go to the first one here in the Sims where you are. Oops, here you're in them. I think you were in them. Yeah, so just go up to the first one and we are pretty close right there, right? So this is, uh, photo Sims that we're taking. This is actually taken from the back of the landowner's home. Um, so you can kind of see the compound. We'll just kind of go through these quick. And then if you go to the next one, this is five fifty-two A, which is location three, five fifty-two is, uh, um, location two. Next picture, um, location five fifty-three is from the back property line of, uh, number twenty-one oh five. Uh, again, you can see a good chunk of the compound there, which you would probably also on location three or location two, the next one. Not much difference there because you're really about the same distance. Um, continuing on to five fifty-four, it's from the southeast corner of twenty ninety-five. And the next one. Again, not a huge difference. Uh, five fifty-five would be from the northeast corner of twenty eighty-five. That's location three. And location two. Now it's starting to drop off the crown of the hill a little bit there. So you're starting to lose some of the compound. Next one, five fifty-six. And that is from the southeast corner of twenty forty-one. So that's location three. Next one, that's location two. Again, you're, you're losing the compound just because of the crest of the hill. Location five seventy-five, which is the northwest corner of twenty-one seventy. So that's from the south looking north. Um, so what you'll see is, is the tower moved three hundred and forty feet closer and also is fifteen feet higher. So if you go to the next picture, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. That, that one was location three, now it's location two. So location two is further away. Uh, the next one's five seventy-six, which is in front of twenty-one fifty-six. Um, this is three. And the next one will be location two, which is behind the trees and a little lower, a little further away. And then the last one's five seventy-seven, uh, which is, uh, right in front of twenty-one fifty-two. And that one, it, it falls in the trees. Um, so it's not, not a huge view from that particular vantage point. So what I've found, having been out there and with the drone point and everything, location two is actually less visible from the homes, both to the south and to the west. It's something we would pursue if the board is looking to do it. As Verizon Wireless really doesn't care too much wherever they go. I can answer any questions?
Uh, yeah, the change in the, uh, base elevation. That was a revelation. I saw and heard that, uh, you say you're about fifteen feet higher between location two. Location two is fifteen feet lower than
Correct.
location three. So that pushes the thing up higher.
Yes.
Um, which would be one consideration of, uh, endorsement of location number three. Uh, but as you go through your pictures, uh, I think once you put leaves on those trees, you're going to change the vista, uh, that probably a half to almost two-thirds of a pole will be, have a background of the leaves.
Yeah, one, I know one of the things that the board talked about last meeting on the eleventh was getting it closer to the woods.
Right.
But what you'll see is it really, the woods really aren't impacting the visibility of the tower.
Well, I think from the, uh, northwest, primarily from the homes where a lot of these residents live, it's, uh, it does affect it in a, in a positive way in terms of being closer to the woods and further away from the homes. And I think that's why we asked you to go through this exercise and we do appreciate your taking the time and the effort to do this because it certainly, uh, I think it gives us some now three options to consider in terms of, uh, at least down with two. So, board, uh, have any questions?
Just for clarity, or because of the terrain, uh, tower will appear fifteen feet lower at location two than
Correct.
I mean, my experience, Chuck, what, what I'm noticing every cell tower that I pass, right? Uh, and what, what I actually notice is
He's not an expert.
You notice the cluster on the top. So you don't, I don't notice the tower, uh, for the most part. So for my, I guess, in understanding that the perception is actually fifteen feet lower, me from an aesthetic standpoint, I think that could, uh, be less impactful for this two, but if I'm I'm actually useful to site two or My thought on three was it tipped it more out of the peripheral of those houses to the north. That was not really the, the base of the unit or anything. It's just more out of peripheral on those that we heard from them.
Wha- what I've also seen is that actually because of the crest of the knoll, you really don't see the compound as much, the location two versus three.
I, I personally don't think it's much about a compound. It's more about the pole.
That's further.
The compound's gonna be tree covered, hopefully, when grows, uh, so it's really just gonna be the pole.
Okay.
Obviously, what you asked for us to make that consideration, we haven't done a design, a full engineering design of location three. If it's the board's choice to, uh, that location three is, is the preferred location. As I said, it works from an RF perspective. We'll need to do the engineering necessary and, and update the plans. Uh, again, uh, we leave it to you again. Uh, I just reiterated is closer to the homes to the southwest. And, uh, I guess that's, you know, but that's up to this board to decide.
Well, for the most part, I guess, Jared, uh, this package, a lot of the mechanical is basically the same, right? You know?
It is.
Just the site plan and the actual locations. And it's not, which, which affects the site plan, uh, in terms of its, uh, uh, resolution.
It's, it's, it's roughly the same amount of disturbance, et cetera, but, you know, as I assume you're gonna want to have engineered plans to, uh, to approve, right?
I have a question.
Kim?
Um, topic came up last week about, uh, exceeding the one acre of disturbance. So where, where did you end up with on option three?
It was purposely positioned to keep the project area disturbance just under the acre. Where the previous project was, I think it was like point nine five. I'm gonna be roughly the same, uh, point nine five acres of disturbance for location number three. That was taken into consideration. Um, as far as agricultural disturbance, not that much difference either. Um, I think we're like point three, four acres for location two and point three eight, point three nine, uh, for location three. Not a lot of difference, but a little bit more in regards to the location three.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Lusk. Uh, let's hear from our, the neighbors and, uh, uh, I see Mr. Capelli's on the line too and, uh, we'll listen to anybody and everybody. Please give us your names and
I'm James Dwyer.
You want to go through the rules, how many minutes everybody got?
Oh, standard rules, uh, just like last time, three minutes, please. Don't there be redundant? If you can, uh?
But if, uh, Mr. Campanelli would like to speak first, I would rather have that happen, but I, I would like to speak.
Okay, sure. Mr. Campanelli, uh, do you have something to, uh, bring to the board's attention?
I, I prefer to wait to see with the balance of the homeowner's say since the new location may affect them somewhat differently. So I'd rather hear from them if it's okay with the board and speak afterwards, if that's okay.
Okay. I'd primarily like to hear from you folks as to how you feel about option three.
I didn't know about option three till, you know, a few minutes before the, uh, the meeting. Um, but I'm James Dwyer at twenty twenty-five County Road Eight and I sent a couple of emails last week that Sarah was supposed to so, so, um, then if you do follow the prerequisite described in the town code for special use permits, you will have no choice other than to deny this special use permit. You would have to believe an attorney hired by Bell Atlantic Mobile that told you there was little to no effect in the neighborhood or property values or fellow, uh, county Canada Dingle property owners that have submitted letters from uncompensated local realtors describing twenty to twenty-five percent drop in value and property owners' letters explaining the effect and use of enjoys enjoyment of our property. Mr. Campanelli, who submitted a brief listing the substantial impacts that will be inflicted on our homes. And these pictures, as I showed you in my email, are all smoke and mirrors. Uh, they're out of perspective. Uh, there was two homes that they said, mine was one of them, that there was no view. No, not if you put the camera down here at the road. And you walk in the backyard and it's very visible. Uh, all research will tell you that any property within a quarter to a half mile will be devastated. Twelve hundred feet is less than a quarter mile. So I, I think what they've shown over the last three hearings is there's no place on that property that's a good place to put a tower. So the most compelling proof of home building destruction is the owners of the tower project property that recently listed their house at six hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Within two weeks, they dropped the price to five hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred. A twenty-one and a half percent decrease. That kind of says it all. That, that's what we're looking at and what we don't want. And as I said, the first day that I was here, there's not a person in this room, including, uh, the presenters of the application. It's not wiping their brow. I'm glad it's not them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Again, I'd like to hear your opinions on option three, since that's the new input provided tonight.
Sure. So hello, again, thank you again. Mark Detwiler again, twenty twenty-one County Road Eight again. Um, I will speak to that. Um, I do have some prepared remarks that I would like to get to first. Um, I'll share something that I don't think I've shared about myself yet. I am also an attorney. I'm licensed to practice in New York State. I do practice in New York State. I'm also licensed to practice in Massachusetts, but I do that less these days. And the reason I point that out is only because there were some comments made during the last meeting, which I felt like, um, were a inaccurate statement of this board's authority, both within its own zoning laws and within the case law that can be found riddled throughout the federal courts of New York State. And I just want to make that clear because I think it's important. And I will note that I did submit a letter to the board today. So I understand, of course, if you hadn't had the chance to review it, I won't repeat the letter in its entirety and I won't repeat the prior arguments and points that I have made about the substantial impact this construction will have on my home and the neighboring homes. But looking to the town's specific provisions, so I'm gonna look at two twenty dash thirty-five. Special use permits may be approved by the town planning board only after the following standards have been met, including, and I'm paraphrasing to be quick here, no more objectionable to the users of nearby properties, including such things as unsightlyness or similar conditions. Then further on in section two twenty dash six zero concerning personal wireless communication facilities, subsection G, the effect of the proposed facilities and use on the other properties in the neighborhood, whether such installation or use will materially affect the value, use, or enjoyment of neighboring properties. So within the town's own zoning laws, there is a permission and in fact, a requirement in some cases to consider these factors before approving the construction of projects. We are only asking that you utilize your authority that's provided to you and consider those factors that we have brought to your attention. The case law, which I won't repeat here because it's been presented to you, but I would direct you to the appropriate section of our original submission, which can be found in pages three through fourteen of that brief. Turning to some of the points that were made today, including the proposed site number three. Um, I think that the pictures that were presented by the Verizon representatives do exactly, um, what they should, which is show the impact on these homes, which is significant. As their representative pointed out, most of these homes are visible from this site. The back of these homes are visible from this site. These are the portions of the home that people enjoy, that people use, that is important to them, myself included. And again, I've submitted a letter. I won't repeat what my letter says. I know you've read it. I know you have it. But concerning site three, I don't think there will be a way to make it invisible from my property. But site three, and I speak only for myself, I do not speak for my neighbors, I do not speak for the community at large. Yes, I understand. Site three will be the most obscured. It will be closest to the woods, which would make it less visible. It is protected. Well, you can't tell in this image, but on the prior image from their submissions on, uh, the nineteenth, you can see that it's protected by more buildings. It is obscured. So to close, I remain opposed to any of the constructions because, um, that is our position and that is our feeling and that's what's important to us and that will, what will have the least effect on us. Thank you.
I think if you were here thinking, I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hello there. My, my name is Tim Stryker. I'm the vice chair of the Town Canada Dingle's Agricultural Committee.
Sure.
And, uh, the location we're And, uh, the location we're actually talking about, that is actually my childhood home. I spent seventeen years of my life there. Just, just a kind of a neat fun fact. Anyways, my, my comments, I just wanted to share a few comments to, to the board about this proposed cell tower. I would say if it, if this plan is to go through, my opinion is, I think, the number two location, uh, co- close, close to the ponds, then the number two location would be the easiest to farm around, is my understanding. My, I actually know Merlin Sensenig, the, the gentleman who currently owns the property. I understand the property is about to change hands or might, might already have. But my understanding is number two location would actually be the easiest to farm around. So I just, we gotta say that on a personal note, I'm a farmer. Uh, still, my family, we farm in here in Canada, April, the assistant farm manager of my family's farm and obstacles in a field. It, it makes a world of difference, I'm a farmer, if you can farm around things in a much easier squared off fashion. So I, that's just a comment I wanna make to the board. The number two location, it, it squares that field up, makes it ju- ju- just, just make it a little easier to farm around. On another note, I'm never, I've never been one to like constructing things in an agricultural field, but I understand that some progress is necessary. And my, my understanding is in that area, cell service is not as good as it could be. So the cell tower should have a positive benefit on better cell service in that area. But my concern with building a cell tower there is if you're going to build a long driveway on the property. Suppose my, my, my concern is in the future, many years down the road, now you have a road going almost into the heart of that property that could potentially attract future development to the site in an area of very important farmland that I feel should remain agricultural land. Which it, it's possible that, you know, a neighboring farm could purchase the property and the property could be agricultural land forever. But just a comment I wanna make to the board that when you construct the big long driveway into a piece of property, my fear is it could invite future development uh, in an area where there should, I would rather not see future development. Suppose I, I don't know if I really have a constructive point with all this.
Appreciate your, uh, you know, your expert opinion, we are not, I'm not a farmer. And certainly it's good to hear your perspective, Wes.
Uh, thank you. Of course, um, and before I forget, the number one location, I understand, was actually at the northwest corner of the property. My understanding is a lot of neighbors strongly voiced their opinion against that, so that's why. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's why the two and three locations were devised.
You're correct.
On a personal note, if I was, if I had to stick the tower somewhere, I actually would have went with number one location because it would have been, it would be the easiest to farm around.
Yeah, you're making a call, but yeah.
All right, just.
But I, I do appreciate your opinion.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
There is no perfect solution.
Anyone else?
Yes, if I may chime in, this is Mr. Campanelli.
Okay, you've got the floor.
All right, I'll be brief. So just to clarify two things, Mr. Detwiler was correct. Um, there are two bodies of law which are governing your processing of this application. The first, of course, is your local zoning code. And to the extent you can, you should treat this pretty much like any other zoning application. Um, grounds for denying applications of this type do not come from federal laws, based entirely on your local code. And on your local code, you have the power to deny this application based upon adverse impacts, both in terms of adverse aesthetic impacts and reductions in property values. And you now have in your records substantial evidence of both of those. And the last key in that puzzle, I would say, is the recent home sale where the seller was forced to reduce the price of their home by a hundred thousand dollars, most likely because of this tower. So you have the power and quite frankly, you should deny the application. If you're looking only at your local zoning code, given the dramatic adverse impacts this would have on these nearby health property owners' homes. Now, at the same time, you are constrained by federal law and here's how that works. Um, the applicant provided you evidence of what they alleged to be, and the existence of one or more gaps in service. The reason they do that is because federal law prohibits you from denying an application, even if it violates your local zoning code. If a denial would effectively prohibit an identified carrier from providing personal wireless services. To prove that a denial of this application would be an effective prohibition, they have to prove two things to you. And they don't get to say they have a gap, they get to provide you with evidence of a gap. But you and you alone get to determine if they have proven both of those things. First, the existence of a significant gap and second, if this proposed installation at this site, at this section of the site and at the height they want, is the least intrusive means of remedying whatever gap they've proven to exist. If and only if they prove both of those things to your satisfaction, based upon probative evidence, then you must grant the application. The problem is they've not made that proof, they've not shown you probative data of an actual gap, much less that you have to put the tower here to remedy the gap. I'm not saying that there are no gaps in service in this area, but they haven't shown you probative evidence to establish where any such gaps are or their boundaries. Even worse, I'm not talking about a marketing map, but if you look at the last exhibit to the brief I sent you, it's an actual map from the FCC showing their actual coverage. It's not a marketing map, don't fall for that. So I respectfully submit to you that they've not established that denial of this application would be an effective prohibition. At the end of the day, what it means is, number one, you have the power to deny this application if you choose to do so. And number two, you should do so because granting the application would not only violate your code, it would inflict upon the nearby homes the precise types of adverse impacts you adopted a permit requirement to prevent in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi, Dan LaFever, two one seven two County Road Eight, um, my question, two one seven two County Road Eight. Dan LaFever, I wrote a letter in, first time attending out of the three meetings, as you could see, very busy, got two very young kids. Um, but thought it was important to, to make this meeting. Um, just wanna say, uh, the, the pictures that were presented today have, uh, severe adverse impacts to my property in particular. Um, I'm from Buffalo, New York originally, um, moved out to Canada, I have a remote job. And the reason we picked Canada was specifically for the scenery. Um, school districts, uh, very important to us. Um, and, uh, building a, a future for our family in, in a home that we love. So obviously, this would have a huge adverse impact. I can't speak on which site would impact my property the least, especially because, uh, if I pick a site that impacts my property the least, I know there's other homeowners that it would impact the most. And I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and split hairs and, and decide which, which location would be the best because it would adversely affect someone else and I'm not here to do that. Um, what I am here to say is that it's, it's an adverse impact to the neighborhood as a whole. Um, as previously stated, I don't think there's any proven gaps in coverage. Um, I don't know the last time just driving anywhere in Canada, whether I had a dropped call, missed text or anything like that, do it a drop in coverage. So again, if it's, if it's a matter of padding their marketing map and saying, hey, we have this many towers and this much coverage, I, I don't think it's a gap in coverage that they can, they can prove that, hey, we need this because of a gap in coverage. Um, so again, that's, that's kind of all I wanted to say, but, um, that I would be opposed to, to any location.
Uh, to that.
Thank you for your time.
You're, you're located further south of Canada, right?
Yes.
Twenty-one seventy-two?
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, uh, Mr. Lusk, you wanna address any of the issues that were brought up?
Just a brief response and, uh, obviously, um, and respectfully to Mr. Campanelli, he's indicating that we haven't provided the data of the, uh, the gap service. You recall from our February third, twenty twenty-five submission, uh, tab W was drop call data from the area, right, that was, was gathered, um, and, and provided. And, and, uh, we provided a map that shows all the dots of the drop calls in the area. Uh, and, and in the area, um, the service area that we're trying to cover, there's a, a six, I wanna read it. Uh, a, a six percent, uh, drop, exactly, uh, six point four, three percent drop call data. Uh, and that is, uh, well in excess of the national standard for one percent. Mr. Campanelli is aware of the Oyster Bay case from twenty twenty-four where the court and other courts, uh, in New York have indicated that where Verizon can demonstrate at least a one percent drop in, a drop call data, that that in itself, uh, indicates a significant gap. Uh, and, uh, and that's, that's the, the law. Uh, and again, I know others have indicated they've driven through the area and know that the problem that we're trying to provide. Um, reliable wireless telecommunications service is essential for everyone that lives in the community. Uh, I don't believe you can place a tower somewhere and not have it be visible because technology is required, the phones are required to see, uh, towers. Uh, and again, we've demonstrated the project, in fact, applies with the code, uh, is, uh, and is necessary to, to, to provide that, uh, significant coverage gap in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Lusk, the other milestone or, uh, condition that Mr. Campanelli pointed out, uh, was that you looked at other options, there's no other option?
Correct, in, in our initial application, we demonstrated via the search ring and, and, uh, this was the only available location that would rent to us, we, we searched for a long time. Uh, and, uh, the, 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 the fortunate or unfortunate is, is a, is a, uh, having grown up on a, on a farm myself, the farm, the, is those who know the farms are, the farmland around this area is loan owned by, uh, mostly by a particular LLC and they just were not interested in, in communicating with us. And so it severely limited our ability and this was, uh, Mr. Sensenig agreed to provide it. I think there's been some indication about his sale. Uh, Mr. Sensenig wants to get back to Pennsylvania. Mr. Sensenig sold his house and quickly because he wants to be leaving by May. Uh, the prop, the farm property was sold at a premium. He did reduce the price of his, but, uh, of his house, uh, but he, he would tell you that he did it because he wants to quickly sell the hap- house and get back to Pennsylvania.
All righty. Anybody else before we move on?
If I may, sir.
Surely.
Yeah, I'm starting to enjoy this too much. As I said, my name's Robert Collins, I'm president of the Horseman Club. And if you look at that map there, we are approximately two thousand feet to the southwest of that location. And we're, hey, now we're gonna make that place look better, we're basically a toxic waste dump that says lead dumped on that area since nineteen nineteen, so you're not gonna hurt it. So if they wanna come over there, bang, thank you.
Okay, can you call up the search ring? I think as I recall, this is, he's not in your search ring. Jared, can you tell her how to find that search ring? Gosh, give me a second. It said the March, sorry, it said you dated the submission, so. Well, the search ring, I guess, is, is, uh, located, it's tab F of the application, it's, it's a, uh, aerial photo, tab F of the March, or excuse me, September thirtieth submission, sorry. I know you, you even considered the new water tower as a potential option, but it was, it didn't work. Compared to the north. Okay, ordinary removal, so?
I had a question for Jared, um, you said that you're selling the house, is he selling the land also, is that separate?
That's all been, I, I don't know whether he sold them together, I have, so, they were, they were sold separately, but they're both sold.
Both sold.
The land at a premium and the house at a little, uh, at a reduction, again, I did not speak to him, so I don't have first knowledge, but Jeff, Jeff, why don't you come up and say it into the right?
My name is Jeff Skolnik, I'm with NBC, I do the real estate stuff for the Verizon. Um, talking with Mr. Sensenig just a week ago. He is under contract as far as I know for the land, which he received a premium on versus what he was looking for. The house is not under contract yet. Uh, he reduced the sale of the pri- or the price of the house to get the quick sale, like Jared mentioned. He's trying to get his family moved back to Pennsylvania, uh, in short order.
Last meeting, you said that the contract was already signed by the property owner currently?
Which contract are we referring?
The contract for the lease of land.
The lease of the land is completely executed inside, yes.
How's that change? With the landowner change?
That won't change, it won't at all.
It'll get basically transferred. It was all disclosed to any buyer that approached Mr. Sensenig.
Chris, uh, just real quick, I, I know, I think from a, from our perspective as a town, uh, in relation to the Telecommunication Act, I think we've talked many times, but I think we should say one more time before we uh, take this under celebration, uh, there are certain things, as long as the applicant provides certain information in terms of the need.
Yes.
And, uh, no other options being available.
Yes.
Uh, that essentially it comes down to us deciding where to place it.
The least intrusive available, I think that's, I think that's a fair way to state it. Um, I don't think Mr. Campanelli misstated, uh, the law when he said, you know, there are I think he may have misstated in the applicant's opinion, the facts about necessity, about the need. Um, but yeah, I think that's a fair way to state it.
That being said, then we have our ob- obligations, the board, to make sure that it's in compliance with section two twenty-sixty, uh, needing those standards, uh, which I think we, I've looked at many times and compared them with the application. And I think for the most part, found them to be in compliance. Uh, there were two waivers being requested, uh, one for the, the Drummonds and the other for the, uh, the surety, I guess, was, yeah, the two-year.
The, the term of the special use permit.
Yeah.
And one for Agne.
That's part of the, I think it's part of the same section.
The thing you just had, the radius, sorry.
That's right, no. So that's the search area and aerial photo.
You're out, outside of the radius. On, um, way outside. Yeah. But good effort, that's good, that's sad. I showed you my property after this, guys, you could put a cell tower there too.
Okay, uh, so we're down to, I guess, you know, acknowledging that there is a need and there are no other options considered. Uh, applying our standards in terms of special use permit and the site plan. So I guess that's where we move forward.
I think that's a good analysis, Chuck.
Okay, uh, the applicant did provide a full E I S or impact statement, uh, part one. And, uh, we have in front of us a resolution including part two. And I know you put this together, Eric. So essentially what it does, it takes all the, uh, as a, as a, as a government body, we have to, in terms of seeker, look at each particular condition, uh, one through eleven, and provide a statement as to, uh, how those, uh, how those standards are being addressed. Uh, has the board looked at those? I'm specifically referring to a document that, uh, state environmental quality seeker part two, sure, sure environmental assessment form. Okay, are you in agreement with, uh, the responses, uh, that they represent? What we as a board would like to, uh, see entered into the records? If so, we can take a vote.
Does any of you object to, to that? You don't want the applicant to prepare site plans for three, location.
We're getting to that, we, you know.
Well, I think, let's, if you, if, I think my recommendation would be have a general discussion before you take any votes. Before you take any votes, decide whether you think. Number two or number three would be more or less intrusive. Because that I think it's I think number three would be the least intrusive, then I don't think you should take any votes tonight. I think number two would be the least intrusive, then I think the perceived the way you were.
Okay. So the the thought being if we if we offer up three.
Yeah.
Then we go into the meeting.
Then the app of cottage would prepare new plans for you. Because you're in front of you is a secret determination, a special use permit. Decision and a site plan decision. Right now, you only have a site plan, location number two. You know, I think you could generally just go down the line and say. I think it would be better in this location or less intrusive in this location.
Well, I I think we go to the applicant providing which option we're going to. Through a consensus, essentially.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the board's feeling on which option they'd like to see?
Mine is three.
That's my opinion.
This is the site.
Yes, that's right.
One, two, three. Four. And you've said you're, I understand, you could live either way. All right, I think option three is something the board would like to see move forward. So being that it's not a application of record right now, I guess. We're going to need two things to happen. There's another continuation in the shot clock, right?
Yep, there's that. It's all such time as you're, you can prepare the site plans.
Let's let's do it out two, two months, two meetings, like we need probably a month to do the engineering. So give some time to get, so whatever, the second meeting and.
It's the twenty second, twenty second of April.
No, let's go into May.
Oh, into May?
Yeah, two, two months. And there might be four meetings, but we need at least probably four weeks to do the engineering and get that to you.
I'm pretty sure hostage has a button they can just press.
I wish, and that that will include a revised EA, because it, and that's that will be the EA that you'll consider.
Seventy nine, twenty?
Either the thirteenth or the twenty seventh, detailed.
Is, let's go to the twenty seventh just to extend it so that we have it and then we'll we'll plan, if we can get on the board earlier, we will. And we'll submit, it's just as quickly as the engineers can edit.
Well. Even if the resolution says we need to. May, if they got the materials sooner, you could just put it up. The chair can overrule motion or resolution.
We're just extending it, the shot clock to the twenty seventh. We made it. If we can get it in earlier, we will.
Okay, so the. Let the record show that the applicant has granted, so you could follow this up with a piece correspondence on the.
It's in the record if you if you'd like, I I'll make.
State the words, I hereby.
I hereby, on behalf of Verizon Wireless, extend with consent of the planning board, the shot clock until May twenty seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, and then we as a board would continue deliberations on the special use permit and the site plan until the same date.
Sir, any other, with this, the amount of work we're going to go, is there any other information that the board needs?
I have one more for Dave. Dave, I'm looking at your last drawing of your driveway to three, and it still shows your pull off at twenty foot wide.
Right.
The pull off, according to the rule, is a twenty by fifty on the side of the driveway. Want to lean on MRB Eric over there? So you're passing two fire trucks, we're twenty four feet wide, which is.
The code says twenty by fifty.
I also went back in some of the meeting minutes and it talked about the twenty foot wide driveway.
We defer the Canada site design criteria, and I'm hoping for you to like camera what I thought I had it was. Bottom, it better be wider than twenty two miles, but I'll hit a number for you right now. But I think it was in our, I think it was in our letter too, you know, I have to check a little bit to see. The orientation of this one isn't kind of along a straight run of the road, it's right on the curb. I'm not sure if that impacts how the force officer wanted to design for fire access.
No, he's saying.
The fire, the fire code.
So it shows a twenty by fifty off the side of a twelve foot.
He's going to call it thirty two feet wide.
Thirty two feet wide.
I'm saying twenty four.
Total edge to edge, twenty four, if you want.
If you're passing two fire trucks. Twenty four should be fine.
Depends on if there's guys, I mean, I would say if that's. If you're not meeting the standard of the site design criteria, it's just another waiver that you would have to ask from.
I couldn't find it in code, so.
It's in the site design criteria. Catch, catch up with Eric and Mike Murphy.
I love the previous plans as well, so I'm, it's, I can't find anything that's thirty two feet.
Well, we've done that on one driveway up the middle Cheshire. It's a twelve foot driveway with a twenty by fifty on the one side.
That was not, we, cottage did the plan, I didn't do it, but it's like twenty or twenty two feet wide.
So Bob, do you have a safety concern of of?
I just wanted to follow the rule on New York State.
I have it pulled up here on the site. All common share driveways, regardless of blank, and individual driveways longer than five hundred feet. Shall be constructed to support HS one loading and provide an emergency pull up area that's thirty feet by eighty feet. At intervals of two hundred and fifty feet for emergency access clearance on the edge of the driveway to any obstruction. Okay, you can ask for a waiver for the language, but that's what the second.
It is an unmanned facility. Someone gets out there once every three-ish months, so it's not like there's a lot of.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, one one other thing, I think I mentioned before about the heights of the evergreens.
Yep.
Having a ten foot height within two years.
Yep, we're working on that.
It's got to be, okay, yep. That's the other thing I have. All right, so we have a. Motion, or we don't have a motion, we have a resolution to continue. Do I have a motion?
So no.
I mean, a motion, do I have second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, if not, all in favor. Okay, see you.
Let's just thank you.
Folks, thank you all.
And really, folks, we we're trying to work with you here, I know. Couple our part, helping your part. Bear with us.
Thank you, have a good night. Trying to sell it. Yeah, I tried there, sir.
Okay. Next, we have an application, CPN twenty twenty four, one thirty eight. Scott Harder has provided a site plan for forty seven seventy one. County Route sixteen for a tear down and rebuild. So property. West Lake Road. If you recall, board, we had made a recommendation to the ZBA. And I think Mr. Heard that evening in our discussion said, I think we're going back to the drawing boards, which you did. And you've got your variances on the ZBA or variants. Great, three variants, right? And. Renner, how are you?
Pretty good, Mr. Rylott, how are you?
Good. Tell us about it.
So I'm owing for Mr. Harder for a second here. Good evening, everyone. Rob Brenner with the Lock from Mahoney Brenner, eighty three Seventeen Street, Canandaigua. Here for the Applebound family. With me is Scott Harder, as the chairman just referenced. We've also got Mike Volpe, landscape designer, and Jack Seagress, the project architect. I'm just going to give an introduction and overview of where we've come and where we are, and then I'll let each of the disciplines. Answer any questions after Mr. Harder gives a general project update on site changes. We did a review before the zoning board on February eighteenth. We obtained three variances that the chairman just referenced. We resolved a coverage question and we also modified. The lake setback to conform with the existing setback of the the structure to match that. Since we appeared before the ZBA based on some neighbor feedback at that meeting. The current plans that you have in front of you reflect the deletion of a rear retaining wall behind the septic system. Adjacent to the tennis court that's on the neighbor's site. That was a request that they had made at the ZBA meeting. So again, this project, we've tried to make some changes to respond to your comments. We've certainly made some changes at the zoning board of appeals meeting. Live in connection with some requests that they had. We obtained the variances and this is. A request to move forward and receive site plan approval to allow the demolition reconstruction of a home. Four seven seven County Road sixteen and part and parcel of that. Will be an upgrade of the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. The current cottage is served by a holding tank. So in working with Tyler Oley and also the Department of Health, there's a preference to have. A fully functioning wastewater treatment system that meets current standards on the onsite wastewater treatment loss, so that's what we've done. I'll, or go over the site plan that you see on the screen in front of you in detail. And then each of the disciplines can answer any questions that the board has, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Scott. Hi, so we did, we did rework the drawing and we did our best to. Address the reduction of the variances being sought and. Our our final effort was a, we were able to. Remove a retaining wall that we had relatively close to the rear property line that the neighbors. Were concerned about. We were able to create a swale in that rear area and carry that wall more closely into the compartment. I'll call it or the terrace. So that allows us to eliminate that structure and also provide an area that's more. Accessible for service requirements that may or may not be needed. We raised the house up, we eliminated a perimeter drainage system that we had originally put around the house. We felt, or I felt, after looking at that. And given the flood flooding that's occurred over County Road sixteen at this location over the last few years, the best thing that we could do was get the. House to a higher elevation, so grading has, as you can see with the contour lines, has brought the house up higher. And so we have positive drainage away from the first floor of the residence, which was not the case previously. And was not the case under existing conditions either. Everything that we've done is intended to be a net benefit to the owner who's maybe making a substantial investment in this property. I think we satisfied the zoning board with our responses. And you know, we got the variances requested. We've, Mike has updated the landscaping plan per the. I would say relatively minor changes to the structures, retaining wall structures. If the board is interested in more landscaping issues or as landscaping questions. We have drone photographs that were taken recently of the site that I think really show what we're up against and. Allow you to address the potential impacts almost visually. Because many of the leaves are gone from the trees, so you can see the site quite easily. Jack Seagress is here, he's the project architect. He can speak with you about. The house design and how it fits into the site based on the grading plan that we did. Everything that I did in terms of creating that drawing was based on Jack working with the owners. To achieve a layout and this house size that he could accommodate. And I'm available for any questions if you have.
Okay. So the variances are all on the west side of the road.
Correct.
Correct. And I think our concerns, and I think the ECB's concerns were mostly. Related to the variances, exceptions you were asking for on the east side. And we do appreciate your going back and looking at that, and I think taking care of those issues.
That's correct. We we did, we did make our, we did reduce the. House in various ways so that it could fit into, or at least. Not create a more non-conforming situation that already exists there.
So again, the septic system is being pumped under, under and up. To the west. Underneath the garage.
Correct.
You had said you're going to put a slip liner.
Yes.
Under the garage, so if you ever have a problem with that force main, it could be accessed. Then you go to a box, split, put it into the.
Correct.
Trademark, I can't remember the trademark of the system.
Oh, well, those boxes right there are intended to represent the. The sending. Or the drilling pit and the receiver pit. That's what those represent. Those are, those are temporary locations that'll go away after the. Practice is completed, but the carrier pipe will hold two force mains. And the pumping system has a duplex pump system, so it pumps alternatively. Right and left, if you will, to feed each bed separately.
Well, and I think we discussed before, certainly. It's us and community that have the old storage tanks, the holy tank, no longer part of the.
Right.
Property. Word.
Hey, Scott, yeah. Much better plan than you last had, thanks for that. I understand the removal of those trees that you show on the plan, that's definitely, those are pretty bad trees. They need to go. When I went out there, looked at it, they're, they're at their time to go.
That's correct.
I I like your landscaping plan, it looks pretty good. The only thing I didn't see is how you're going to maintain the water, control the water off the roof lines before it gets late.
Um, you know, I don't think we showed roof drains at this point, but that's something we could certainly add to the final plans.
Yeah, that being that close to the lake, would you like to see some kind of infiltration before it gets to the lake? That was my only point on your own.
And I'm glad that you saw the the trees out there, because I, Mike, Mike can speak to them, but. And I'm not a landscape architect, but they don't look very healthy to me.
I'm a woodworker too, and I, those have got time to go.
Yep.
Longer.
Maybe Mike ought to go over the landscaping a little bit, because I think under our shoreline guidelines and. Seen a few shed requirements, we have to spend some time on, so and I'd be curious as to. Are you going to apply?
Good evening. My name's Mike Volpe, landscape architect on the project. So the, with regards to your questions, yeah, most of the trees that we're removing. They all have suspect health issues. The ones that I will say that need to be removed just based out of function are the ones. Where the, where the garage is going to be completed. It's a mix of saplings, there's different types that. Probably professionally, I would say the ones that have the most. Beneficial to the environment would be some saplings of some oak trees that I saw. Most others are poplars, maples. So I would just say they're, they're lower impact trees. I know that's not great for. What neighbors may say about the view shed, but that's just in my professional opinion.
I think it was, I think it was in this one. Here we go.
It's coming.
One more.
Thank you. So I updated this. Again, based on some drone images that we took of the property. Just to highlight roughly where that existing tree line is outside of our property. It's just. If you go up a little bit, you can see the tennis court as well, I labeled, it's approximate, it's not at the exact. Location, but it is very, very close. We still do keep with the restructuring and eliminating the wall along that north, northern property line. Adjacent to the tennis court. We did, we just, we gained more area there, like Scott was saying, for swell. And Scott can attest to it, we're not actually, we're not actually able to put any plants or. Trees within that area based on code restrictions.
Are your species native? For the most part?
Yes. On the south uh lake frontage, so shoreline guidelines. We're trying to basically tuck this home into the landscape, so there's, there's a massive tree plantings. On, on either corner of the lake frontage part, so that this home is. Is more or less, we're trying to make it tucked into the landscape, so it's not fully exposed without placing trees. Smack dead in the center of the property, we're really trying to accentuate and frame the view, making it look cohesive.
Any questions on the landscaping, relation shoreline guidelines?
Just second what, what Bob said earlier, um, it. It looks good from our perspective, I know it's a tough site to kind of. Tuck a house away on, when it's right on the lake, but I think um you all did a really great job of layering and. Doing what you could with what you have.
Thank you.
Should this street remain that doesn't show up on there? Just verifying whether it is to.
It is intended to remain and. All of that layer corrected for the final submill. It would, it would remain the. That actually was gonna be an additional tree towards the, towards the lake corner. Yes.
Has the owner decided on the color of the facade of the home?
Uh, me.
Yeah. It's something uh, we look, like the, that's usually the question I ask. Brings it up because. We try to refrain from bright white. As much as possible, I know we haven't been totally successful, but you know, natural colors, earth colors.
Yes, that, that's the colors going for it, trying to get the house to blend into the site. Um, it, it'll be kind of a term I'm recovering using is beige. With some white trim. Of highlighting all the uh things that we want. Um, one story from the street. And so starting to have an additional strain to have on the back on the lakeside. Um, to keep the profile low on the, on the lakeside.
Chuck, we do have a listing of that from today as well. So the roof materials will live on, the windows will be white, terminal will be white, shingles, which siding in this space is a great slate. And decking is a timber technique.
Thank you. I, one of the thing with Scott, I, I think we talked about all street parking before. You've got a two car garage, right?
Yes.
And then you're gonna have room. Two cars off the street on. In front of the garage, right?
Right.
So essentially you could have four, four cars if you don't spill the garage with stuff.
Correct.
Is your intent not to allow or have any parking along the uh east, east side range? Is there room for it?
Well, I, I know that the owner tells me at present that's where he does park. Um, because of the situation, so. I should think that based on what we're providing, they'll have a better alternative.
Yeah, cuz. We've moved in the. A little closer to the road, right? Are you, you're out of the right way, right?
Oh, we are out of the right way, yes, we have to.
Yep. Okay, anything else from the board? Anybody uh here out there? Like to address the board, I know we got. Two uh. Correspondents from uh Newbold at forty seven sixty five and. I believe it's the Tompkins at forty seven sixty four, and I think primarily their concern was. Uh, flooding and drainage, I guess, uh, it has been an area that's been subject to flooding. We certainly don't wanna have this project make it uh. Any worse, uh, hopefully it'll improve it somewhat. Anybody like to address the board regarding this application?
Yes, I'm on the call here, who's steel?
We hear you ma'am.
Okay, um, yep, I am here, I'm a landscape architect, I'm representing. Chelsea Maria and help Heather Tompkins, resident of forty seven sixty four. County Road, they did submit a letter. Um, while drainage was uh potentially mentioned in the letter that they submitted, the bigger concern was the retaining walls. Um, we just received this application material just before the meeting, so we are happy to see that the wall. Um, along the westernmost property line was removed or as it appears, it's just moved further away. From the property line gaining another, it looks like twelve feet um of distance, which I think will be much more. Feasible, um, given the construction methodologies that are probably proposed for those walls. Um, it looks like they are. From the grading plan, maybe eight feet tall, so we, uh, the only question that we have is just, there's very limited detail. For the retaining walls themselves, it says they're concrete. Um, just to ensure that there's no negative impacts to the tennis court, which is. Very close to the property line. Um, we'd, we'd like to know if there are any construction details or at least encourage the planning board to review those to ensure that. It's practical or feasible to construct those walls. Um, in the location, they should be now that they've moved further away, when it was, when they were shown two feet off the property line, it was a bit more concerning. Um, so that was one comment, um, but the application looks, looks great, a lot of our concerns were, were alleviated. Um, with the removal of the trees, I know from being on the property, again, working on, on that. Um, adjacent property line, there are several trees that may be right on the property line. Or just over, so I think with some of the grading work, it could, the way the grading plans are shown right. Now it could impact those trees. Um, so I'm not really sure what the process is for those, if those would be removed as part of this project or not. Um, there isn't necessarily concern with removal of them, just more concern. On if the, the impacts of the work would ultimately result in the decline of those trees. Um, with a landscape architect being on the application team. I'm sure they, they can look at that, um, but that was a comment that we had. Um, and then other than that, there was no detail on the garage. Architectural, I don't know if that is included in this application. But um, if those were available, we'd be interested to just know what, what those architectural plans look like.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you and appreciate the application updates, um, we know it's a very difficult site and it looks like a great improvement to the neighborhood.
Okay, uh, Scott, the, that was a question I had regarding the detail of the retaining wall.
Yep.
Eric, do you wanna go over your comments?
We, we met with a structural engineer, I think it was two weeks ago. Uh, someone who we're going to have design the structures of the retaining walls, um, so. Um, that design is forthcoming, uh, but having done a very similar project, as I've mentioned before, just down the street. The height of the retaining wall. Retaining walls in this particular case. The height varies depending on the topography that you're traversing as you go up the hill. So in the area where it connects into the garage, yes, there will be probably about. Eight feet visible, but then it tapers down to about two or three feet over in the corner, so it's variable. Um, that design, that structural design is pending. And you know, we have every reason to um. Complete that and submit it to you folks for your acknowledgement and your review if you would like to review the structural design. Um, I suppose it's also up to the owner. Once the wall is um being fully designed as to what type of wall. What type of texture, color, things like that, um, the owner would like to have. We just say concrete at this point because structurally that, that's what works quite well. But it may be something else that he wants, maybe he wants to put some laminate on it, I have no idea. Um, but as with other projects I've done, I, I always have a structural engineer involved in this aspect of the project.
Yeah, I, I think typically MRB picks us up that the, it's more of the structural. You know, foundation, the, the height does vary.
Right.
The material, if you could provide that, I think we could make it a condition.
Sure, and, and the garage is actually functioning as a retaining wall in this design too. Um, it, it makes sense to use those wall structures to support the system as well. And then to um address health concerns, there's actually a liner system. Uh, that is proposed between the concrete floor and the walls of the garage. That forms an impervious barrier between the uh leach field that surrounds it and the accessory structure of the garage. I'll let, I'll let Jack speak to the architecture of the garage.
Do we have any drawings?
None of the garage.
Yeah.
I'd say, I think I have, I think I uploaded the architecturals. But, but, yeah, but there was, there wasn't anything in the garage, it's just the house, yeah. No garage, only a house. At least not what I had.
Fair to say it would kind of look like a house?
It was traditional design. Um, with the, obviously a one story place to park your car. Um, I have a floor above that, that portion, the garage. And if we can get some storage up there, we will take it. Cuz we have very limited space on the site and in the building. Um, but it's same materials. Of the uh maintenance, cedar siding. Uh, trim windows. All the same, so it looks like it belongs to the house.
Yeah. And under the height limitations in that zone.
Yes. Which is different than. Yeah, I'm thinking that's an accessory.
An accessory in that.
Yeah, you said, uh, I think it was an accessory building. In the RLD, it's got a different height.
Yeah.
Restriction, yeah.
The accessory is, is it thirty five an accessory?
Where's the, is anyone? Anyway, whatever the uh height restriction is on the uh accessory building, AKA garage.
Yeah. Maintain that.
Okay, uh, I'm just looking at a couple third party reviews, uh. Eric, again, do you wanna? Bring to our attention any of the comments you had, I think for the most part, they were technical nature.
Yeah, how much most related though to the, were related to the last plan set, these revisions addressed a lot of those comments. Um, but we're still working on a review of these plans that were submitted. Shouldn't have that seen that, like there's any substantial nature or counseling to retain walls and details for reconstruction, I think.
So you have a condition that uh. Uh, county public works, uh. Highway, the highway permit, you know that, you've got the encroachment. For the sewer line under, underneath the West Lake. Off street, how you making out with Tyler as far as the approval?
They, they just received these latest plans, um, and uh. I'm waiting for their reply, um. As, as we've done in the past, if we, because of the DOH is involved in this one as well. I defer um your approval. Um, to the C of L, as we've done before, there will be.
It will be informal discussions you've had have been very supportive.
Yes.
They're, they support the change from holding tank, so.
Yeah, and I think there was an initial review, they.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the zoning board asked us the question about, you know, whether, whether there were other systems we could use. Um, that came through in one of our meetings with publisher, and so actually Kendall's. Um, Larson provided an email that I uploaded that. Um, or zoning board had a chance to review that. Where he was generally supportive of the design that we have presented at that time. And the alternate, versus the alternatives that we mentioned. And so I, I believe that we have the support of Tyler and, and Kendall. For the system that was proposed.
And, and just to reinforce what Scott said, we submitted that email from Kendall at DOH in support of our variance request. Because there was a question received about, do you need that overall footprint for the system, is there any? Other type of reaching system you could use and, and the conclusion that Scott and DOH reached is, this is the footprint we need to serve the house.
Yeah. Don't have a lot of options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the uh county. Uh, they declared this exempt as far as the county plane board. Uh, or could enforce an officer. He put some notes on a plan, I don't know if you saw those, I think they're primarily related to flood plain limits, uh.
Yeah, and I, I think I addressed his comments and I sent him a message via.
Yeah, his review was back in January, so.
Yeah, but I didn't hear back from him.
Okay. Well, again, I think we have a condition, so all we gotta do is get down the hall and say. Murph, what do you think? Jim Fletcher. Well. It's just reestablishing the water, yes, it's not his route, so okay. Uh, ECB, again, I think they, they reviewed the initial plan. And uh, I think. Wrong Kim, I think a lot of the issues that. You folks brought up uh have been addressed with a new plan as far as the variances on the east side. And also, I guess, landscaping. Tree protection. Correct, sound good?
Yeah, there, there was a lot of comments on the other side, but those variances.
Okay, uh, I think we're ready to move on. Anybody else? Okay, we've got a seeker that's a type two, so. That being said. We can include it and bundle it with the uh. Single. Sites, uh, site plan approval, someone wanna take it?
I'll take that motion to, to approve the uh secret type two action. On CPN twenty four one thirty eight at County Road four seven, or actually four seven seven one County Road fifteen. On approval for the seeker and also a single stage site plan resolution. Uh, or approval with uh. Right now, there's twelve, but I believe there's fourteen.
Uh, condition thirteen, plans to be revised to identify. Most handling of root drainage, need to incorporate infiltration such. Uh, vision fourteen, proposed landscape plan to be revised to know the tree to remain is shown on the existing conditions for it. Um, and then vision eight, just be revised to add reference to the interstate from the belt, also requiring air approval. Vision six to be revised, just to remove reference of highway, so she, you know, just be told.
There need to be one for the uh detailed for the uh retaining wall.
Okay, we can add that, it's in our layer two, but.
I've learned if it's not in the conditions, it's not.
Can't find it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got the, those conditions. To that motion, for the discussion, all in favor?
I'm gonna get a second.
I'll second.
Now we can, all favor.
Okay, motion carries?
Thank you.
Okay, turn the page. Uh, next is the continued public hearing of the. This uptown landing, um, I don't know, I, Jeff, you're here. Things, uh, things are happening out there, uh, so you wanna bring us up to data, what it is?
Uh, sure, so we um. We raised some issues with RG eight, um, I think Sarah's, Sarah's been aware of it, um, not issues, just something that. We were expecting to get a twenty five foot easement um on Farah Road and, and now they're saying that um they're only gonna be okay with a fifty foot. Um, there's a possibility of uh, of burying uh the lines, which would, would allow us to, to uh, to have that twenty five foot easement. And we're just trying to, to get our arms around it, it's a cost. Um, it is about, I believe about twelve hundred foot of line that would have to be buried, so. It's not a, not insignificant cost, we wanna make sure that we're, that we're. It's not a not insignificant cost. We want to make sure that we're that we're right in our numbers. Yeah, so we were looking just for some time to to um. Get again, get our arms on the numbers.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, go ahead.
Just chime in. Yeah, if I could just chime in with a couple things. Jeff is exactly right. And so what we're trying to balance here, make sure that we advise Jeff and Dave and and uh. Everyone else on the development side is um. Number one, the cost to do the improvement that R G N E is asking for as a condition of the easement release. Um, we had reached out going back into September, which is why we got as far down the road as we have. And unfortunately, uh, the person that was heading that up at R G N E isn't there anymore. And now we're finding out uh skip the step. And that's why we're finding out now, six months later, unfortunately. So it's not that not that the development team and. Uh, Ian and Dave specifically coordinating with R G N E weren't doing their due diligence. But unfortunately, the timing of it, we really didn't want to push through an approval as we're trying to get to a final section one. As the board knows and working through a lot of uh loose ends here to try to get this tied up with a bow. Get an approval and then have to come right back to you and say, oh, we couldn't make this work from a dollar standpoint and uh. And and close the loop with R G N E. So that's why we're asking for the tabling to just to really get this figured out. Because either the project can bear the additional cost or we have to look at redesigning the frontage along Fire Hall. Which would have an impact uh financially to the project as well, either through delay and or potentially losing a few of the single family lots to make space for the mixed use in apartments to establish that that streetscape. So our goal is to work through that, but again, we did not want to uh leave the board in the dark and then say, oh, by the way, here's what we ran into. And we'd really like to get it straight before we finalize this approval instead of having to reopen it.
We appreciate it. Okay, so uh we're looking at continuation. Uh, of I guess both the uh. Well, primarily the overall. Primary overall, which was something that was close to a. Review or final review. So that was uh till four eight. Matt?
Yes, we anticipate that we will have a definitive cost uh nailed down at that point and can make the decision and reinform the board at that date and time or at that meeting as to whether or not we're good to uh good to move forward with as it is. And and really, it's by the four one, because if there's any update or additional info, we want to make sure we get that to you a week beforehand.
And then we we were also tonight going to discuss the uh initial discussion of the uh. Final section one. So I think you suggested continuing that till May sometime.
Uh, I'd like the initial discussion to go hand in hand with the preliminary overall. So the the desire would be that we'd proceed as as we had contemplated before. It was my understanding that uh the direction given to the board via staff and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. That you wouldn't be able to consider that as a discussion item until taking action on the preliminary overall. But then the final would happen roughly a month after that. So we're just looking to delay that entire process that we had kind of outlined um by two weeks.
Okay. Well, again, yeah, it's section one was just a first time kick around tonight, so. Uh, I guess we don't have to update on that. So let's uh just consider a resolution to continue the uh primary overall to uh, let's make it April eighth meeting. Should be our next meeting. Some more seconds. For discussion, if not, all in favor?
I.
Okay, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Take care, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Back to C P N twenty twenty five, oh fourteen, Scott murder. Thirty five thirty Middle Cheshire Road. Sounds familiar.
Logan.
Logan.
Um. The last time we spoke with you about this project was at the P R C meeting this month. And um.
Staff.
Right, um. And the project involves, in addition to a house that's already started under construction. You um expressed concern as to the visual impact of the. Project with respect to. Uh, the ridgeline guidelines and. Um. One member of John Casey's um group took some photographs as you had requested. And then I posted or I uploaded um some drawings showing. I think we call them comparison drawings, as we've done before, showing the original house layout. The second house layout, and now this is the. Second house layout with the addition. You know, comparison drawings. One through three. So that's the, that was the original house and orientation as proposed. That's the one that's currently being constructed. And the third one is with the addition being proposed. Additionally, uh, since the P R C, we've brought Mike in to develop a landscaping plan. To address the um obvious visibility of the site and try to. Uh, restore some of the trees that have come down or vegetation, I should say, around the house at both the. The north and the south sides. I'll I'll let Mike speak in more detail about that. Um, but I think that's kind of where we left off.
Scott, isn't the pool new also?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Yep, the pool is. It was decided that we should. The owners decided they wanted a pool.
Why not? Yeah. Uh, okay. And I know at P R C, we were having a tough time visualizing the front and the back and the right and the left as far as the elevations. And uh.
Right.
Uh, was that clear to the board or was that confusing to the board? It was confusing to me at first.
I I went up on the property and I was saying, I looked at the elevation.
So you understand.
I understand.
How the.
Yeah.
additions being put.
Yes, even the revisions, I really couldn't, I thought it was going to be a tear down first and I was like. Then I realized.
Yeah, it's it's an addition, it's an addition too, and.
South side.
And the the contours on the south side show the slope away from. Uh, that's that side of the house. That's that's about a one on four slope, one vertical and four horizontal. Um, twenty five percent slope. For lawn.
You get a all new foundation with that too in basement.
Well, they're 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 carrying the same uh basement floor elevation, but that's.
Yeah, I mean.
That's not uh changing, so you're basically projecting that further south, and that's that's why you have uh. That's why you have uh an elevation. Different at the south end of the house, more so.
Yeah, it kind of drops off a little bit. And the use of the revision is. An indoor.
Indoor sport court.
Indoor. Okay.
And and I think uh I think I uploaded the. Architecturals. You want to look at them.
That's what I read. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I I mean, I, it's um. It's different.
Okay, so landscaping, yeah, that was a concern. I think that the now that we we see the structure there and I'd look at it every day when I go by it. There was some concern as far as uh. Uh, being in scenic view shed, uh, there should be something done as far as. And there is some of that hedgerow that we removed, I guess, with the. Moving to the south. A little bit of it.
With with the with the proposed addition, there there was some additional vegetation removed to the south. And and Mike has shown additional. I think, I guess I would say compensating vegetation there. Let me have Mike speak to that.
Hello again. So, yeah, with regards to the new footprint. I, we we were looking at the those existing two hedgerows that are on the southern sort of viewport of the plan. And the lower one does help buffer the view already. Uh, the upper one, I going at this from a standpoint from the ridgeline development guidelines to where I want to, we'd like to promote tree, mature tree growth on either side of the residence, so it's not. Front and center exposed, so rather that it looks like it it's always been tucked in within the trees, the tree line that's there. The the owner has a preference for birch tree, so likely going to be a mix of multi-stem birch tree. Among. Potentially others. Uh, I will note that. There is a, there's going to be a full foundation planting plan completed at a later date.
That's what I was going to ask.
I am showcasing the conceptual footprint of a foundation planting plan around the residence that will help soften the view of it, maybe make it more um. More more grounded to the landscape, so there's going to be a mix of trees and shrubs. The owner does not. In this earlier stage of the project, doesn't want to commit to all of those um specific choices of plants and layout yet. So we would be addressing that at a later date.
Mike, what I didn't see in your land, your plan is what you're. Doesn't appear as though you're projecting many things. What would be the east side of the property at all? Uh, fair?
Yeah, that would.
So nothing between the existing teams in the house, nothing to.
Uh, we didn't go to the east on that side, just just due to, uh, I think. The approach was to really focus on the upper, upper elevation of the home. Uh, rather than down in front and center.
Yeah, I think.
Or like to the east, to your point.
I mean, the challenge that we have there is the shoreline guideline aspect of what this is going to do to impact. Landscape from that, so now we've got this massive frontal approach that's going to come. Out to what has been a hillside over decades. There's nothing that's going to happen down at that lower road level that's going to protect the scenic view shed almost.
At the lower road elevation? It's.
Coming into the property following the driveway, that's that's actually gets a nice shield on the site as well.
Yeah, says two rows.
It's really looking at it as you're going along Middle Cheshire Road and then the view shed from the. Thinking of it from the lake up towards the. Towards the property and how that that's impacting. I'm thinking the same thing, but maybe behind it on the west. Different trees behind it. That would take a long time to grow. It won't happen.
No, I know. That would be the only thing that really would. Take there. You're lifting on, my thought on this is we've already approved this house as it sat. Now this addition, it just makes it longer, so. We've already done a.
Doubles the size of it, right?
Yeah, on the length.
That's that picture of it. Beautiful sight.
Yeah.
It's that picture, it's that picture.
Well, Mike, you you did mention you're you're planting some things around the patio and the pools. Uh. Right?
That's right.
At some point.
But we don't even see those.
Uh.
Near the pool? It's.
No, you're looking up at them.
Yeah, the, if you're.
Assuming they're shrub or a bush or some size, uh. You can see them and. Give some sort of vegetative. Uh, approach to that east side.
I think, not to speak for the client, and Scott may be able to weigh in on this. I believe the owner was open to some additional tree plantings on that, what would be the lower elevation hedgerow. So. It would.
Yeah, I think I think he was open to a few. That's right.
Um, yeah, not to speak for him. Uh, with them, but the. And quite frankly, we can bring that information back to them in regards to the the eastern, that eastern lower elevation. I'm not sure what. I would, I think they'd be open to that, but I just I can't speak for them at this point in time.
We had a previous iteration where we did show some there and. Uh, the owner preferred this one, but it was ruled out entirely, so. I think, um. We could, we could submit that with. What what was in the previous iteration? I don't think the owner has an issue with that.
Yeah, it would. Do you want me to explain that?
Sure.
So on the that easterly hedgerow that's in the drawing. That's in a lower elevation of the home. Uh, we're going to extend that tree line with a few more additional shade tree style in the in the similar concept that I showed here. We were just going to extend that hedgerow a little bit further, uh, just to help soften the view of the home. Again, uh, it is from the southern sort of view vantage point. Not directly um addressing your concern from the the other way or the the putting green, so.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how we memorialize this, I think. What you're saying, Mark, and I think what the board's saying is they'd probably like to see that. Uh. Before we uh. Take any action on the on the site plan, um, could you provide that to us in the next two weeks?
Yeah, or would it be possible to um give us a condition on that, um, I. It could be. I don't know, just verified using town staff or your town engineer or someone.
Uh, I I think this is an issue that the town, uh, the plane boards are responsible for. I think we'd want to see it, so.
Yeah, we, right, to follow up to Scott's comment, yeah, we could. We could, if that was conditional, yeah, we could extend the tree line. Uh, to better. To better relate to the existing putting green, but if that requires another board meeting, then.
Well, I think I'd I'd like to see the whatever you propose around the patio and the pool there. You said that's being considered, but I think that would certainly add to the uh. Other view from uh from the Le Cheshire Road.
So. Only if it helps, the the there's a hatch pattern around the home, if you did, if you could zoom in, you might be able to see it better. But it's just outlining the conceptual planting bed layout. If you don't mind zooming in a little bit more.
Oh, is that the uh? The L O one?
Correct, yeah. Which I called out in the key as, you know. It's a traditional triple ground mulch planting bed with mix of large um woody shrubs, but basically woody shrubs, perennials, et cetera.
You have those in your planning schedule at all?
No, I just left it as a hatch as a conceptual planting bed layout.
Yeah, I'd like to see a little more detail of that.
I I think we got to achieve, I mean, I would refer to the ridgeline development guideline, in that it states that. Proper site planning can dramatically reduce the visual impact of the ridgeline. We're we're not doing any things to reduce the impact of the ridge line development.
But, excuse me, but actually we are. On the on the on the site, on the site plan, I I initially did. A ridgeline guideline statement, and if and if you could call that up, Kim, uh, sheet. Sheet one, it's in the upper left hand corner. In the ridgeline statement. Um, because we went through, we went through your guidelines and the guidelines. Speak to a a number of things besides the visibility, certainly visibility of the view shed is one. Um, but in terms of the density. Um, we we identify the fact that this piece of land could accommodate many more than one house. And the one house per acre is allowed for zoning, I believe. Uh, this is one house per approximately thirty acres, so there's low density. The house was also installed or is designed to be a walkout house, not a two-story. House, um, so the roof line is lower than would be otherwise. The the roadway, the driveway. Uh, was laid out in a way to be buffered by. The upper tree row and also the slopes are not being cut into. Um, the driveway is set in in a way to agree with the slopes in the best location possible. So that the maximum slope is ten percent and that's it. So that the maximum slope is ten percent and that's it. Uh, let's see, the architecture. The colors of the house, um, I believe, or I believe we were informed it was going to be, uh, earth tones, earth tones. With, um, stonework and timber, I believe, as well. So there's a natural theme to the architecture style of the house and its appearance. As I understand it, going through the guidelines and those are items that are also of concern. Those are items that I think we have well covered, the one that we're. Most vulnerable at is the, is the visual, and that's why I brought Mike in.
And I, and I think with some tweaking, we discussed that, uh, we could get there, so.
Okay.
You could do that for us, we appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, you can have that to us, uh, in a week?
Yep, easily. Yeah, no problem.
All right.
So we might be able to take care of it, the following day.
Yeah.
Uh, it'd be April eighth.
You, continuation falls. Second, thanks, Phil.
No problem.
Uh, okay, motion second to continue, uh, this application till April the eighth. Okay. All in favor? Was there anybody, I forgot to ask, anybody in the audience that wanted to address the board regarding this application, I mean. You had another chance to look at it, but, uh, if you want to speak tonight, we'll, we'll listen to you. Not, move on to the next one, which is, uh, a public hearing for twenty twenty-four, one forty-four. Skyline Pro Electric. Uh, for fifty-six fifty Rossner Road, a subdivision, a two-lot subdivision. Of a twenty-seven point six acre parcel in the AR two district. Being subdivided into two lots, one being two point seven acres, the other being twenty-four point nine acres. Uh, which has an existing dwelling and some agricultural buildings, is someone here to represent the applicant?
I'm here, thank you, Kyle Krenzer. Uh, reside with my wife and family at fifty-six ninety Rossier Road, which is the property. Uh, directly behind the lot one on this, uh, application. Uh, also on, I, I did notice that, uh, Mr. Burt, the actual owner of the property. Uh, who resides on, would be residing on lot two of the property is also here online, it looks, it appears. Um, but I've been the one attending all these meetings and speaking to this, uh, application and the sale of this property and subdivision.
Okay, so we went to two lot subdivision, uh. And. Has some, and I, uh, natural resources on it. Or were there?
It's like farmland or.
Maybe it was the question whether it were ready. You got the site plan or the subdivision plans, Kim?
Yeah, it looks so pretty and fine.
Showing site distances for the, uh. Lot one, potential site distances for lot one. C E C B. I have no landscape. There's nothing proposed, oh, excuse me, wrong, wrong application. Uh, wet lots or, uh, I think how you were talking about potential on lot one of. Uh, using solar and geothermal for any future development you may do, okay?
Yeah, it's just a, it's a quick breakdown of the ultimate plan and goal of this property. Um, I am the owner and managing partner of Skyline Pro Electric, um, and SL Property Holdings. Uh, and, uh, over the last three years, we just did our three-year anniversary for Skyline. Um, and our electric contracting company has taken off and done pretty, is doing pretty well in the area. Um, and, uh, we ultimately need to get the company out of, um. My personal property, it's get the trucks, get the equipment. Uh, make the family happy and get that out of the driveway, got young kids that doesn't need to be in the driveway anymore. And, uh, this property, uh, made a lot of sense for us to, you know, reach out to Mr. Burt about. Uh, because, uh, it kind of squares off our property, my parents actually live next door at fifty-seven hundred. Uh, we purchased that property and, and put a house on that property, uh, a couple of years ago, so yeah, on that map there, I'm the fifty-six ninety. Uh, I've kind of been a flag lot, my parents are directly next to me at fifty-seven hundred. Lot one is the field directly in front of us, um, which Mr. Burt farms, um, it's, it's a bit of a wet. Feet farmland, uh, field there, and if he's able to, he probably could speak to that a little bit, if you have questions. On what that field is, um, at this time in this application, we, we're literally just looking for approval of the subdivision. Um, we don't have a site plan yet, uh, we're working, we'll be working with Mark's engineering, hopefully to get that put together. Where we can, uh, get our building put up, uh, to house the company in time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess at some point, Kyle, you'll, you'll be sitting down with the town staff to go over. What would be permitted in that zoning district in terms of anything related to a commercial enterprise, so. Again, it's not, it's not for something to discuss that much this evening, but forewarned or armed. Or any, any issues, uh? That you have with this, uh? Ag committee said there was no loss of ag land as far as they were concerned. Sometimes we do require on the. The cutout lot that we show where, if where a septic system could be located. Uh, we do have the note on here about this is not being approved for a building lot. So, I mean, that, that certainly sufficed in the past, I think it will suffice here.
If, 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 for your knowledge, you're looking at it, um, if we went back to the other, the encore map. Uh, my septic system is actually up by the edge of the road, right on the border, um. There, there's a pond at the edge of my driveway, then my septic system is a green spot on the map. Uh, we were basically thinking that in time, a similar septic leach field would, would fall somewhere adjacent to near that. Location, the building would be closer to the hedgerow, um, as we do a site plan in time. Solar would be towards the back of the property, um, and that would also. Uh, help feed the building for power and eventually feed the buildings, uh, with geothermal forced air.
Okay, so again, in the future, but. For a subdivision, anyone here online would like to address the board regarding this application? If not, uh, I think we're ready to, uh, close the hearing. It's, uh, the board's liking and consider, uh, two resolutions, one being the seeker, it is an unlisted. Seeker application, so, uh, let's take them separate. Someone want to give me a motion on the, uh, unlisted seeker? I'm like a motion check or unlisted action, um, the seeker for CPN. Twenty-four dash one forty-four and five six five zero Ross. I'll second. Okay, got a motion second, any further discussion, we have, uh, parts two and three that were prepared by M R B. All in favor? First, okay, let's move on to the subdivision. Give me a motion on the single-stage subdivision.
Sure, I'll, I'll move to approve, um, CPN twenty-four, one forty-four, single-stage subdivision approval. I have fifty-six fifty Rossier.
Do you want to add anything related to this subject question?
Are two standard conditions when you do subdivisions and they haven't worked out a septic, are that sound buildable a lot? And, but they've shown those two notes that we normally require on the subdivision class, that's why I don't show them here as.
Okay, are y'all good? Okay, all in favor?
I, I. I'll second that, I seconded it.
Okay, made by Tim and seconded by Mark. Alrighty, uh, we got an approval. Kyle, you're good for now.
Fantastic, I appreciate it, we, we can proceed then on the actual subdivision and the sales, uh, thank you very much, everyone.
Good luck. Okay. Next, we have, uh, CPN twenty, twenty-four, one forty-five, Greg and Lindsay Woodick. They own a property of forty-eighty Kramer Road, they're requesting a site plan approval. To, uh, construct a single-family home in the AR two district. This one of yours?
It is.
Hello, Billy, Bill Grove, Grove Engineering. Greg Woodick is here with us too, the owner. So yeah, it's a vacant, uh, property, uh, sandwiched between twenty-one and, uh, Kramer Road. And the idea is to build a, a single-family residence with an attached garage, uh, driveway that meanders through the, uh. The meadow area and then, um, driveway into the garage on the upper level, uh, with a walkout. On those, uh, in lower level of the house, uh, into that kind of meadow area. Um, conventional septic system to the south of the house, uh, rain garden for the roof runoff. Off of that north, uh, northeast corner of the house on the other side of the driveway. Pretty straightforward, um, there is some, uh, I guess steep slope disturbance as we're cutting into the bank, uh, to get the. Make the grading work well with the house and the walkout, um, and, and be able to enter the house on the. The garage side, but it's, it's not a ton of excavation into the steep slope, um, I think it's, it's pretty, you know, minimally invasive and. And keeps the house up and out of the, uh, that lower meadow area, which can tend to be wet sometimes.
I, I see you've done some cutting out there already, uh. As a cutting occurs within the limits of the service, you haven't gone outside of that at all. Yeah, you essentially build the house into that bank, I guess. Did you think about maybe moving it closer to the road so you wouldn't be into the bank as much or? You wouldn't have a side entrance garage, make it tougher.
Right, initially, the, uh, the owner wanted to put the house even further up the hill, uh, was able to talk about that. Once we got there and looked at it, it just didn't make sense to, to have it up there and to have to bring a driveway. Uh, would have been a much longer driveway and a lot more disturbance into that.
But as far as moving it closer. You, yeah, you wouldn't have. Yes, curve for your driveway to get in a side, side garage, you'd have to almost have the garage doors facing.
Right, and to get it, yeah, for, for the elevations to work out with the walkout basement, it really needs to. Needs to be in the hill, um, to some degree to accomplish that.
Yeah, the walkout's in the front, yeah, yeah, essentially two-story in the front. Go to bank.
Yep.
Uh, and the trees are in that meadow there in the front, uh, that I see you. You, you ran the driveway.
Yeah, the.
Among the trees and try to preserve.
Uh, preserve those trees that are there now, there, there were a lot more trees in there, I don't know if it was. Um, prior to, to Greg owning the land, but there, there has been some clearing done in that meadow to take out some of the locusts that were there. Um, I think what's there still are walnuts for the most part.
Yeah, at least someone made it through R G B, that's one of those as well, pretty stuff. And a couple of ash, I guess, yeah, a couple of, didn't make it. Uh, your runoff control off the roof drains. Where's that gone?
Uh, to the, uh, rain garden, that's a kind of dirt or green area, uh, off the northeast corner.
Speaking of rain gardens, uh, do we have a standard? Maintenance note that we put on plans for, I, I thought we.
We have a standard condition that we use that. In stormwater irrigation technique says to pick up plans are to be maintained in functional design.
Not in particular, have to do it.
Yeah, sometimes. Depending on the practice that are used, they have. You know, their own maintenance is in the detail though. These plans, I don't know if that's the case for the, the main variables. Uh, but often times can, the practice detail, the detail sheet could have the highest. Specific to other practices.
You, you're aware that there is maintenance involved with those rain gardens, so it's there, we have to. Take care of it, um. Does the board feel that any further clarification as far as the maintenance of those rain gardens being?
Not in this area, I really.
E C B, uh, they, you did talk quite a bit about the trees and. I think it was concluded that a lot of them were black walnuts, locust, ash. The rain garden, uh, they appreciated being included. Uh, steep slopes were acknowledged, we obviously have the hardwoods, uh, the wildlife corridor. Everywhere in the town we have a wildlife corridor. Limits to the servants are shown in the plan, we certainly. Ask and make sure that you stay within those limits, you don't go, uh, outside of them. Uh, the county plane board, uh, found this application to be exempt. Uh, the egg committee found no loss of significant farmland. Uh, Jim Fletcher wants to talk to you about water at some point as far as their service. Uh, and I guess Tyler is reviewing.
Yeah, he, um, Tyler, the watershed inspector got it, and sent me an email today and asked me for one more detail. Be added to the, uh, septic plan, but I assume we'll have approval on that tomorrow. I did reply back to him and got what he asked for.
No comments from code? Is there a stream on the property? I, I had something about, no, the blue line stream.
It kind of crosses the northeastern corner.
Yeah, just the very, very corner of it.
Yeah. Out of the lot of fur. Okay, uh, I think we're pretty good, anybody, uh, from the audience, uh, want to address the board regarding this application on Kramer Road?
I have one question, oh, two questions, is the driveway gravel?
Yes, great.
You don't show it on the plan, but maybe I missed it, is it twelve feet minimum? You should show it on the plan. I am missed it.
I don't know if there is a note on there, but I, I'm sure it's twelve feet, it's, yeah, if we scale it, it would be twelve feet, I can add that as a note.
Anyone else on the board, questions, comments? Okay, if not, uh, we're going to type two seeker along a single-stage, uh. Site plan approvals, someone want to give it to me?
I'll do a bundle plan on, uh, CPN twenty-four, one forty-five at forty-eight Kramer Road, on a type-two secret. Uh, resolution for approval and also the single-stage site plan resolution for approval. At same site, but we ate it, Kramer Road with, uh. Currently eight, we add any.
Two, um, nine, we have a note to add to the plans that stormwater irrigation techniques, this is what the rain garden, uh, being, uh, being maintained. The maintenance functional design, and then ten, the condition ten. And that was to be added in the plan clarifying.
Thank you, one ten, conditions.
Motion second. Discussions, is that all in favor?
I.
Those. Okay. Good luck there, huh?
Yeah. Okay, nice quiet spot there.
Yeah. It is a wildlife park.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next application is twenty-twenty-five. Double O eight Grove Engineering, referencing Greg Westbrook. Not carriers.
Oh, she worked for me, yeah.
He works right on some of the. I thought you built, I thought you'd build a big house.
Looked to, for sure.
It is for a site plan to build a single family home. On a vacant parcel, on an existing share. In the SCR one and RLD zoning districts. And it's like a tag team. Okay, fellas.
Again, Grove Engineering, here with Greg Westbrook, the owner of the property. Briggs looking to downsize, I guess, is like.
Structure itself. We sold our home on top of the hill. We should, we'd like to move here. It's a two thousand one hundred and thirty-eight square foot home. And significant less maintenance. So we're here today to present the plan.
Okay, so. I was counting number of homes on a private road and I think we're at three.
That's it, we understand, right?
Okay, I, first I was thinking you're doing, but that's, so, yeah, okay, you're three.
Right.
Uh, there's four of them had to go public. So you're down the hill. Tough lot to, I mean, tough to see where the house is going to be, but boy.
Oh, it's marked out, I saw it.
A lot of easements on the property. You think you got them all built?
It's a busy plan, yeah. I'm buying the, the surveyor. Capture them all on there, but yes.
So you just want to go over. For our purposes, where the different utility services are. Coming from, going to.
Yeah, would it be easier if I?
Greg. Hopefully if I get them, if I get any wrong. Uh, existing water main runs down through there. There's a fire hydrant here. So the blue line is the proposed water service coming into the new house. Sewer, we've got basically two options and Greg has spoke to the county about which way to go with that, but essentially we've got a, a lateral coming out to a grinder pump tank. Um, one option is to take it all the way over, keeping it on Greg's property to connect into the sewer that's. Just up on.
Backside of Riley's Run.
Option two would be to, to bring the line over this way and connect into an existing utility easement into the sewer main.
I spoke with Stephen May at the county, good guy, spoke to Charlie before, Chuck before also. And. So. We're going to figure out which is the best one, but they're both available.
Uh, there's natural gas, unproven natural gas through an easement, nice easement that runs down through here. So we are proposing to make a connection to that. Over here, that's that orange line.
So I, it's a nice second. We gave the nice second, the easement. In our last round of activities, such that. We are able to do that one clearly. And then the electric. There's two transformers.
Yep, there's two existing transformers here at the property line. So that main line is the electric. This is the gray line is the proposed natural gas line.
And I have. Work numbers for both my second and RGV in my possession.
Okay. They, I know it looks like a lot busier plan as far as grading, the, the pink lines being proposed contours, but they're one foot. We went with, you know, using one-foot contours instead of two-footers, so. That's why it looks busier because there's twice as many lines for. For two-foot increment, I guess, if that makes sense. It's, you know, there's some grading, but it's not a, not significant cuts or significant, significant fills. There's, there's a, the driveway will cut some. Um, to minimize the slope of the driveway going down to the, the house to the garage and.
So where are you on slopes? Thirteen percent or so?
Um, there's a portion of, of the, around the house that's at thirty, the maximum slope is thirty.
Not the driveway slope.
Oh, the driveway slope, yeah, I think it was thirteen.
And all, again, getting back to utilities, all service lines, sewer water coming from the house. Being that they're on the property itself, they would not require an easement, but any. Mutual or joint. Services, not services, but names, call them for lack of a better word.
Right.
Would be subject to or is or already subject to these.
Yeah, so the only one that may require an easement, but it's, it would just be chain of. Probably changing the verbiage of the existing easement would be if the sewer line came through and used, utilized this existing easement.
Yeah, when do, when do you think you'll tie that down? This, when do you think you'll tie the sewer?
Probably sometime in June or July. NISAC says to you, they, I know you didn't ask about NISAC, but NISAC is, they've got a penalty if you go in too early, too late or too early. Ding you for that, so we're managing that with the people at NISAC.
I'm, I'm just trying to avoid having. You know, putting one sewer. Route on the line and then have come back and change the.
No, we won't, we won't need to do that. We're going, once we pick it, we pick it.
Okay. So whatever you, whatever you show, we'll go with. Uh, anybody in the board? Anything, let me check ECB. Landscaping. Too much of that involves here other than staying within the limits of disturbance.
Correct.
Uh, obviously there's no loss of ag lands. So I guess. Will you have a view of the lake from? With the trees beyond you?
The, let's talk about the east side of the.
Okay.
East side. Towards the lake, right? So. The majority of those trees are roughly, I'm going to say thirty to forty feet tall.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them, okay? Now, every time I take down a tree, I could take him behind the woodshed. By my lovely bride. And she gives me her opinion, which is, she doesn't want to take anything down, okay? Now, what I want to be a little bit careful with is fire. And I don't want my. House two feet away from a tree, okay? But we, we can have to minimize that and. I would be comfortable with a, you know. Maximum twenty, twenty-four feet to give me some breathing room to. Cut it or whatever we're going to do there, but it's a, and you're, you're blocked by that, to be honest with you. It's unusual position you see. It doesn't mean that I won't cut dead trees. I may, if she lets me. But, uh, so there's a.
Okay.
Willingness to participate. We do, we do, the other house, the bigger house, that had. Significant coverage from the lake. You couldn't see a thing, you know? And I know some of my neighbors did some different things. You know, and that's caused the problems, so we don't play that way.
But to answer your question, the intention is to, to just take out to the limits of disturbance, which is about twenty-four feet from the house.
Showing.
And, yeah, when I did the calculations on, you know.
Forty foot.
Tree, yeah, tree coverage of. A, a forty-foot tall tree is, you know, the same height as the, the roof of the house, so I think there'll be virtually no. No view of the house from the lake.
I would kind of agree.
I mean, most, I, it's unusual, I think a lot of people that build on a side hill with a potential view of the lake would. Wanted to, want a clear cut and, and have a wide open view. Greg's a little different.
Yeah, preserving the soil and it's not letting that run in the lake either.
Mirth, could I call on you, any, any concerns regarding fire code? Uh, access driveways with?
Nothing at first glance. When we first reviewed it, we had one item that we looked at. But as of right now, with the Y, we're counting that as a turnoff because it does. Meet the dimensional requirements, so no issues as far as fire apparatus access.
Uh, within the driveways, okay?
Yep.
Okay. There's lots. Your lot line adjustment, you took care of that?
It's all done.
I, I remember saying. Totally talked about. Uh, we, you heard about the maintenance of the rain garden. You do have a rain garden down there to the bottom. So. Take care of that. Anybody in the audience want to address the board regarding the Mr. Westbrook's application? If not. We're going to move on. Again, it's a type-two seeker. Single stage site plan. Put it together if someone would like to.
Yeah, I'll move to a bundle, six effective action and super stage of cycle approval for CPN twenty-five zero zero eight. Off of the island drive with.
Eight, right now, there's seven Sheldon drafts that I've arrived here and I had one, which is similar to the last one. Nope, being added plans of stormwater irrigation techniques and maintaining functional design.
I had one question. Greg, you stole all that land on your house with that house?
We, we, we cut the, the larger home to two-point-two acres, so we have eleven-point-nine-sixty or something like that for that whole thing.
But you own the roads.
It's a, it's a, it's a, of course.
Okay. It's not on onsite yet.
But it is subject to an easement agreement between the three properties, right?
So they get.
Subject to a right of, yeah, I remember we took care of that.
I hit a copy here.
When your daughter built.
Yep, I, I promise you, I'll put you a copy.
Uh.
I want it.
You give it to our turn. I've seen it. You see it. Uh, Eric. Number seven, I don't think we'll leave that. About the onsite. Okay, so we're down to how many?
Sorry, I think that should just be changed to. Not the water shut sector, but the.
So the sewer district, yeah. Okay. Okay, we got a motion second for the discussion. If not, move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Please. Trying to get through this.
I'll do the second. Oh, that's only did. You get the next one, how about that?
All right, we got a post-boo second. All right.
We're good?
Thanks, guys. I see. Like, fellas, uh, next we have CPN twenty-twenty-five oh thirteen. Cody Johnson, property of fifty-three hundred Black Point Drive. Uh, requesting a special use permit. Uh, to operate short-term rental, the maximum overnight occupancy of twelve. So she would short-term rent. I guess. Already exists. Hi, fellows. What's happening out in Black Point?
So I'm Cody. This is my brother Zach. Our sister Alexa couldn't be here. Uh, but we're seeking approval for a short-term rental with occupancy over twelve. Max sixteen.
Okay. I will, I will say that we were, and I was under the impression. That there was some issue with the septic system. It had to be resolved before we took any boot.
Well, I've already talked with Mark's Engineering and they're getting started on drawing up a plan for a new septic. So we're hoping to get a CFC to keep it moving and then as soon as they. Get a proper plan, we can get it installed. As soon as they're ready.
Okay. Uh, I think one of the things we look at in considering a short-term rental is adequate sewage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I think that has to happen before we can give you at least a special use permit.
Okay.
Is that the only issue? You have with the property?
Yeah, we had the current septic inspected and everything looked good, but then we found that it was undersized for. The occupancy that we're looking for. So, um. Yeah, we're going to have them drop something that will be sufficient.
Okay, well, if you get that done, then we'll. We'll listen to you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, but while we're here. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to address the board regarding this application. Uh, that would be the time to do so. Tell me behind this thing. Excuse us.
Hi, I'm Peach Sports. I live five-three-three-seven Black Point Drive. Our property. Surrounds, this is a one-acre lot in the middle of a forest conservation.
How about that?
Preserve.
Anyway, it's there. Okay.
And, uh. I don't understand how a special or, or. A short-term rental was approved for this property. It's in complete violation of the terms of the deed. Which was. Cody's great-great-grand, great-grandfather. Sold the property, that one acre lot. To his father. And it was specifically stated it was for residential purposes only because he did not want any. Rental going on and he sold the rest of the property to Bill Brewster. Bill Brewster sold it to my wife. And since then, we donated the entire seventy acres. To the conservation or to the land trust for under a conservationist. So. To talk about. Uh, short-term rental, uh, special use, I think is nuts. And I think it's in violation of several. Restrictions and ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
I could speak that.
Consider it out here.
I live adjacent to these folks and they're great guys, but. There is.
Tom Shorts, by the way. Wait, no, you live adjacent, you're down the street.
I live in a parcel that's. Immediately to the north.
Oh. Wow.
Eric. Authored the most recent iteration of the comprehensive plan. And one of the major precepts of the camps of the comprehensive plan was the preservation of open space. And particularly lakefront, it's just parcels got seven-hundred-and-fifty or eight-hundred feet of. Lakefront, it will never be subdivided, developed in perpetuity. And it's totally inappropriate if we look at. Uh, the. Rules for special use permits, the special use permit says anything. That's approved, that's especially permitted use has to be in concert with the comprehensive plan. And if you have. A. Certainly a commercial endeavor of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen people and double that when they have parties. In the middle of a permanently conserved parcel land is in contradiction of the comprehensive. And. If you look at, I'm trying to think of the. Map of the disturbance. Those lands that Lovella rated. Uh, really rare. It was one of the purple ones. I think it was one of the twelve or seventeen most valued parcels in the town of Kenan-Dava. And to. Put. That commercial endeavor that would have. Parties and so on. It's. It's uh. It's adjacent to the Hicks. Parcel, which was also permanently conserved in the conservation season. That was paid for by the town. And I paid the Hicks to put a conservation in, this was donated. It's the only donated conservation easement in the town of Kenan Dayla. And it's the only one with lake frontage and to invite. Fifteen people and their best friends is nuts. And again, it's in contravening the purpose of special use permits and the comprehensive plan. And. The report of the sewer adequacy is, as the guy said, totally inadequate. And it'll cost you a fortune, I don't even believe you've got room there, but.
Costs a lot. What a fortune. Uh, Tom, you can talk to us. Dress us please.
I'm sorry.
It's almost like you have no idea what.
It'll be very expensive and I hate to see him spend the money and not get approved. And they should also honor the deed restriction that their grandfather and their dad. Have got in on their property. And I know that's not a due notice.
What year was that, nineteen seventy six, suppose?
Doesn't matter, it's perpetual and it's in your deed.
Yep, again, that's.
Sorry, guys.
That's right. Okay, well. We're gonna table it tonight until you guys come, septic system, if you come up with a septic system. Uh, is there a current? Oh, okay, I just, I thought it had it and they wouldn't explain. Are you listed on Airbnb or VRV or anything like that?
Yeah, currently we are, yeah.
Wait, what?
It's not in alignment then.
You're not allowed to list it.
Yeah, we, we weren't aware, but we, we were, but no, but um.
I can speak again.
Sure.
If if it's still listed, I would ask Mike Murphy. To lift the permit because you folks have the.
There is no.
We do have a report on septic.
The the report on the septic speaks for itself, yeah. Um, as far as being adequate for its permanent or its. Present use as a.
Okay, well, you fellows have some. Some work to do, uh. The issue of the easement or the uh, agreement between the property owners and the use of the property, that's. That's not our decision, that's something that, you know, you have to work out with your neighbors. Uh, but we, we have certain parameters under the short term rental that we look at. And one of them being sewer access, parking. Uh, obviously, the code enforcement uh, get involved in terms of the adequacy of the fire. Protection inside the structure. Murph, have you done an inspection at all, or has Kyle done an inspection, or haven't gone that far yet? Or they have? Okay, answer, question answered, thanks, Murph. Okay, well, again, fellows, you've got, you've got to come up with that septic system if you can. Where you come back and talk to us, all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you want to just sort of leave this thing open or put a continuation?
Have an idea of how long.
Two a day. No, I, I, I know you're gonna say that.
Mark's engineering needs to.
I spoke with him over, I gave him a deposit almost two weeks ago, so I'll call him tomorrow and hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Let's put it a month.
Can we put it a month?
A month and a half. And then. You have to have it by a month and a half.
Month and a half?
No, you will, you have to have it by a month, about a month from now. So it'll be the May thirteenth. Materials that can be received by May sixth.
As the rest of the application, it's complete. We talked about PRC this. Been so long ago, okay. So uh, it's continuing to five thirteen, someone to give me a motion to uh, take that action. Second. Hey, all in favor? Okay, fellows, we'll see you uh, later on this spring.
Have a good night, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Schwartz, Schwartzman's.
Ask another question. Um, would it be necessary to pursue the issue on the the comprehensive plan and special use? Permit conditions, would that be in Article seventy eight?
Uh, that if and when the planning board renders a decision. That would could, uh, if if they granted a special use permit, that could be something you could pursue with an Article seventy eight.
What if they just grant a um. Rent a short term rental?
That's the special use permit six. It's well, that's what I meant.
For the, for the large number of people who use special use.
It's a little bit of both.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're on item number nine, twenty twenty five oh twenty. This is a uh. Uh, a comment, the ZBA is looking for on a property on County Route four. Because it is a nonconforming uh, lot existing. Uh, they want to uh, continue and. Expand on that nonconformity. Folks, how are you?
Clear the room.
I thought they were all here for you guys.
Chuck, this is Brennan Marks, I'm on the line here if you need any questions.
Okay. So we got Bob and Sandy, all right, tell us about your property out on Karen four.
Well. We had a little property on three five ninety four, County Route four, our residence is forty six hundred County Route four. They're right next door to each other. And we. The house that was there was her grandmother's house originally and it got to be, it was.
Needed a lot.
I needed a lot of work.
Nice to see you down here.
And when our last tenants moved out, is it, she died and we just said. To do something and where we're gonna do the homicide, so we were looking to put a smaller house on that property.
We had that one torn down last February.
Okay. I guess the hang up is uh, you've got that, I guess it's a shared drive.
Right, there is a shared drive.
Yeah.
But what we need to do is. We moved, Brennan did um, moved the lot line for us because we needed the extra room. To put the new house on forty five ninety four. Um, in order to keep it away from, there's a ditch that runs down the. My directions here, the east side of the property. And we wanted to keep it away from that ditch as far as we could.
There's also a couple of trees you want to save too, Ray Sandra.
Right, yes, yeah. So we needed to adjust the road frontage on that lot. Excuse me. Was originally a hundred feet, we were grandfathered in at the hundred feet to the property. But we need to move it, what's the exact, do you remember the exact frontage?
It's a, well, currently the, so lot parcel A, which is the, the rear house. Has hundred and two point nine foot of frontage. And the uh, new house lot has a hundred, that's current and we're proposing. And it's on two sheets before this, but we're proposing is gonna be. Eighty two feet, yep, right there, eighty two feet, that's gonna go with the house behind. And about a hundred and twenty two feet, just under, is gonna go with the new house in the front, parcel B.
So originally, when we bought her grandmother's house. We were planning on building there and at the time Jake Repro said, you should divide these lots now. So down the road, you wanted to do something different, you'd be grandfathered in at the hundred feet, he said, because they could change that at any time.
And they did.
There was, there was a currently a house on this, this lot, parcel B, that was torn down, what, about a year and a half ago, Bob?
Just, just a year, February, yeah, last year.
So, so the lot line adjustment, it was, was done or is gonna be done?
It's going to be done, we, that's why we need the variance.
So to do the lot line adjustment, it creates a nonconform, a further nonconforming lot. So.
Although one parcel B is becoming more conforming.
And then eventually.
Now. And this will be a question for Eric, and I've, it's gone back and forth before on lots. The building, the lot width, is it measured at the, on the frontage or is it measured at the building line? Of the lot, because we have two hundred and two in that rear lot. If you measure it at the building line.
I'm no, no longer the zoning officer, but my understanding is it's measured at the right of my line.
Okay. Former zoning officer.
Okay, so, and then eventually you'll be back to see us for a site plan approval for the house itself.
Yeah.
Correct, if you get the.
Yeah, and I think the site.
Area is still allowed a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a separate application, uh, twenty twenty five oh oh six. But all we're doing tonight is. Rendering our opinion regarding the creating the not, the former nonconformance. Uh, to give to the zoning boards, who you'll go before, I guess.
We haven't got a date yet.
So, Ford, how do you feel? About this uh.
I feel good.
I feel good too.
No issue. No issue. Um, I mean, I'm sure when it comes to us for official review, site, site plan things, we'll. You know, talk about the driveway um, shared between the two lots, but in terms of. The uh, lot line adjustment for today, our review and comment.
It makes a difference, our daughter is planning on buying the house that we're in now, so it'll be all. Pretty much still in the family.
Family.
And it's the, be the last house I remember.
Is, is the soil suitable for a septic system?
Yes, Marx did a uh.
Yeah.
And they, everything's all drawn up for where it has to be and everything's.
Yep, it's a shell modified system. Even though we had to move the septic system over for sanitary reason, we still were able to get the septic on the site. The sanitary easement is for uh, outfall discharge from the VA treatment center.
Oh, that's the, I think is up on the right side.
Actually, they moved, since we own the property, the VA put a new line in, they moved it actually towards the. Property line more than it was, so there's plenty of room there.
Okay, um. Oh, when you go to the ZBA. They will probably say, what are the other properties around in terms of size and frontage? Uh, they, they sort of look at that, I guess, in terms, and that's not something we decide, but it's something they usually bring up. To see uh, how much difference your, your property is from other properties.
I know the one right next to us, to the west, is this like eighty foot road frontage. And the other side, which used to be her parents' property, that's got quite a bit, I think just like three hundred there.
Okay, well, just.
I'll be sure to put those to their attention.
Yeah, I'm sure Brennan will put together.
That's why we've got him.
Okay, uh, so Ford, do we have any? Comments one way or the other, or I guess, we, I, I guess we could. Say something to the effect that uh, we have no issues with.
No objection, no say.
I know Jim Fletcher had a question on the water and we met with him today, so we're in the process of getting that iron bell.
The water service or the?
Yeah, the water service.
Okay, well, yeah, if we'll be looking at that a little closer and we look at the site plan.
Yeah.
But tonight, we're just looking at the issue of the uh, frontage uh, and regards to the variance. Okay, so Corinne, if you could let the record reflect, we have no objection to what is proposed and uh. Wish you good luck at the ZBA.
Thank you for waiting so damn long. This was, this one was a special evening.
We, we perform every two weeks, so.
I am struck to see a candidate when I went to a lot of their meeting, there was union president, so I said to.
CDW Union?
Yeah.
Okay, the last thing is, something we can move off of real quick is twenty twenty five oh fifteen, which was to be the. Introduction of section one of uh, Uptown Landing, so.
Thank you, Brennan.
All right, uh, we have minutes approved from uh, the eleventh. Any further corrections, additions to the minutes of March eleventh? Got a motion a second? Thank you very much, all favor. Thank you, Corinne, good job as usual, uh, somebody to give away? We're heading toward the end here, anything? Uh, Tim and I will be coming back on the eighth, that day from uh. Cooperstown. So uh. Before it gets dark.
I sent you an email, Chuck, I'll be on a airplane.
You do, wait a minute.
Wait, I'm going too. Wait, what? So we've got two, we've got two planning board members.
No, you have three. You have.
No, we've got an alternate command, you'll have, you'll have four.
No, but we'll be back.
Oh, you'll be back.
Yeah, we're coming back that day.
You had a meeting.
So, yeah, I'm out.
You and then you're Dan, but I mean, if for some reason you don't make it back in time, there isn't a quorum to open a meeting and. It's just, the, you know, they shut the doorway down or whatever. Eric and Kristen on your behalf, well uh.
I won't be here either.
Eric will send everybody home.
Kim, just keep the door locked, don't let anybody in.
Can I ask a quick question?
So, yeah, so we Dan, Tim, Amanda, myself on the eighth, I don't think the agenda's. Just as much, maybe letting roads.
Start.
Yeah. That's assuming they get the ZBA.
You know what?
Okay. Get the board.
Uh, just quickly, do you guys need to have the applicants on those referrals to the zoning board for a. Expansion of a preexisting nonconformity? Do you guys need the applicants there?
Sometimes it's nice, like right now, it was like, yeah, it's simple, but like. What are you, what are you planning to do?
I didn't know.
What they, what's the context, but I get it, that was a lot for them to just sit here and be like, okay, it looks good.
Yeah, I actually get more of that. No, because that's a bad. No, you can't, there was, you gotta follow the.
Somebody's gotta wait.
Follow this.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know it. That had no meaning to you, if everyone said, no, we don't need to hear from them, that'd be a good thing to know.
And if I'm speaking.
No, you're.
And if I'm speaking in German, guys, let me know, but.
We're nicer than they are.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer.
Yeah.
It wasn't encouraged, that was a lie either, but.
That was just a general curiosity.
That's the answer, I, I mean, that's great.
All right, so what do you think, Dan?
Show up next time?
Another one of the short meetings. Uh, sorry.
We just need to add this contact admission to like the contact list or whatever, I, I just got there, so I can send them the resolution together.
Okay. And we gotta get a computer tool. So, and you're, you're gonna get one, yoink cloud?
Yes, I'm.
Kim, you got you on.
While we are still in an open session, it's lovely, I mean. Uh, you wanna talk anything else about? Not really, we're still talking else. Talking about cell tower?
No, um, let's be cautious, so then after the hearing has been continued and. Um, I mean, any. Deliberations from the time. You.
Not deliberation, just to note the record and I can make it in that meeting as well, just um, related to. I wa, I went to the open house. Of the house being presented. Along with the same time that. Uh, I was looking at the property across the street for the gun range. And during that, I can correlate what their realtor said today. Related to the reasons for the change in price. On the property, but I said that in the meeting and saying, I'm happy to do it.
You agree with what he said?
I agree with what he said.
And when they go back to PA, that's when they.
Yeah, they seemed pretty confident that was. That they weren't gonna get called out for being liars on that. A poor gentleman from the gun range, I tried to say. No, I'm not doing anything. I think he saw a chance of possibly selling. He said that, he said, I, I've been trying to get him to, we're only two, two hundred feet away.
It's a rock pile? It's an ash pile? At least it's, could be gold there.
Man, a gun range would look, that would be perfect on a gun range.
So that was the, related to their, and I appreciate him because he's here trying to avoid a problem.
I know.
The floodside, right? I really do appreciate it, but, so on that day, the reason I ended up going over there is on the farm. Wow, it's loud. Because they're shooting right at you. Super loud. Go back with the wind normally at your back, it sounds like. Uh, they can barely hear it.
Interesting.
So it was kind of interesting.
Yeah.
That's how I ended up.
You buy it? Since renewed price, price would sell.
All right, and all transparency I would have would be full acreage, I would have considered it, but separated off.
And the thirteen hundred dollar a month for, for the next thirty year lease.
It was a real lease?
Thirteen hundred a month.
Did you see that?
See the agreement?
No, they, 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 they're transparent about it, that realtor will tell you that it's a benefit to the property and everything else.
Wait, does it go with the house?
It does not.
Oh.
Oh. That's what he said, he said, did it separately.
With the, with the farm.
Correct, yeah.
But the acreage. But it's thirteen hundred a month for twenty or thirty years, so the present value of that is, I don't know, about a million bucks, I guess.
Uh, two hundred and fifty grand.
The present value?
The present value is three hundred and sixty some thousand, that's to thirteen hundred, fifteen, six times twenty. So you get three hundred and some thousand dollars and. That's just, that's the, that's the present value, would be three hundred and sixty thousand, I think. So the net present value is discounted. Because they're getting the money now.
No, those are worth more than that.
Rather than it's calculated based on more than twenty years.
Maybe that's what it is, but it's, those are usually worth. Way more. I could, I mean, maybe they're not in agricultural areas. It's serving room three thirty two, that's worth more than that.
Okay. Well, they were a happy group as they left.
Jeez, do we have to public where our addresses are?
Okay, man.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty five.
So.